All right, we're gonna begin the meeting at this time, everyone. So glad to see all of you here tonight. Welcome to the Village Council Meeting for Thursday, December 19th. Boy, we have less than a week to Christmas. Where'd the year go? In Hanukkah next week. Anyway, could, welcome. And could everyone stand, please, and join us in Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Diane, please let the record show that all members from council are present.
Yes.
Before we go into the reports, I'd like to do an administrative item. Question, how many of you tonight are here for regular agenda item number 13? Okay, put your hands down. I'm gonna move, I'd like to request approval for us to move Agenda Item Number 13 and make that the first item we address this evening, after the consent agenda?
Yeah, I think there were just some people who might be running with me.
Well, yeah, but if I don't do it now, everybody will have to wait here for the whole thing, and I don't think that's fair either. So, the people who are here will go with that. So, everybody agree with that? Do I need a vote, or consensus?
Counsel.
Counsel consensus would be fine.
All right, we have a consensus?
Yes.
Fine by me.
All right, so what we're gonna do is, when we get to the regular agenda, the first item on the regular agenda would be what was previously numbered Agenda Item 13, okay? With that, we're going to the reports. What happened here? Let me get down here. Hold on a second, I lost my screen. We had Transportation Planning Agency meeting on, last Thursday, the 12th, and I'm not gonna bury the lead, I'm just gonna, because the lead was, one of the last items we did at the meeting turned out to be something that, I guess you could consider somewhat controversial. We were in the process of finalizing our approval for an update to our long-range transportation plan. This is something we have to update every five years. It projects out over the next 25 years what we have on the list for the TPA of different projects that we look to see get done. For many years, as you all know, the extension of State Road 7 from the 60th Street all the way up to Northlake has been on the TPA's long-range transportation plan for several years. I mean, it's probably approaching almost 10 years. I'm not sure what the number is. And we also know, as I've reported many times at this, at our council meetings, that West Palm Beach has been adamantly opposed to this project. And the project has progressed to the point where it was even no longer on our list because it was an FDOT project, and they were, they were actually hiring contractors and to finish the work. But because of the shenanigans that were going on with the courts in West Palm Beach, the project was put on a hold. And when that happened, it kinda put the project back on our list again. Well, very surprisingly, as I said, just at this meeting, we were taking motions from members on the council to remove certain items that were on the, the list. Many of these were new things, different towns didn't wanna have these projects happening in their, in their communities. And when, when that motion is made, the entire county committee, or board, votes on that. The representative from West Palm Beach then said, well, since we were making motions, he made a motion, he wanted to make a motion, to remove State Road 7 from the plan. Well, to our surprise, the motion passed, nine to eight. And we were totally stunned, because up to that moment in time, and I've been working with the TPA long ago, when it was still NPO, many years, the only people who ever objected that were on the board were members from West Palm Beach. And we had a new member on the county commission who decided he wanted to join that. Those are the only ones who ever objected. So, we were stunned when the vote went that way. Our next meeting with the TPA will be in February, and we will be looking to address this issue because of the long history we have with State Road 7. And we'll see what happens then. So, I just wanted to surprise you of that. As of now, it's off the list. And if it's not, because it came back on the list, if it's not on the list for the long-term, term, uh, transportation plan for the TPA, FDOT cannot finish the project. So, this is a significant issue, and, and as I said, I'll update you. So, that was the lead, that was the real big issue. There were a lot of other administrative things we done. One other thing I wanted to report, that the, the staff for the TPA did in fact move out of the county space, and they're in their own space now, 301 Decatur, if you ever wanna go by there, if you're in the area, can visit them. So, they are totally, for the most part, the transition is completed. There's some administrative things they have to tie up with the county in terms of lease money that they owe 'em back, or things like that. But that, that was completed. So, it turned out to be an interesting, happy day, turned out to be an interesting, controversial day, so.
I just have a question regarding that. And I think, as we were talking about that, early when it happened, is it, so, our county commissioner though, that represents us, Melissa McKinley, was she gonna try and get the other commissioners there to then revisit that?
The only commissions that can visit it are the members that, the commissioners that are on the TPA. And I don't think all of them was there, but I know Commissioner Robinson, not Weiss, he had previously gone on record that he opposes it.
He was opposed to it.
He sided with West Palm Beach. I guess there's a corner of West Palm Beach in his district. I don't know, but that, but it'll, Melissa and I have been in contact, and we're going to try to mediate this and address this, you know, as I said, our next meetings in February, so. Stay tuned, all right? We'll see what happens. And with that, no other questions? I'll start with you, Mia.
Good evening, everyone. I'll be quick, but thank you very much to the staff and everyone for our winter festival. It was a great job, and just a wonderful event. And every year, it's nice to see how it expands, and it grows, and all the different things that you add to it. And since this is our last meeting of the year, thank you very much to our council for everything that you do for us. I don't think you get thanked enough, so, and more Jennifer than you, but thank you. Also, I attended the Economic Forum event, and it was, and I apologize for pronouncing his name wrong, but Aneth Prastad is the president of the Florida Transportation Builders Association. So, he just talked about transportation overall for the state of Florida, and it was interesting to see, I think there were three-
You messed up my name, Bob.
I probably did, I apologize.
No, no, you're welcome.
Oh. There are three roadways that they're looking to build, they're all 10, are all in the Tampa area, but it's very similar to connecting the Turnpike, and 75, and in the northern area because of the influx of residents, or new residents that are moving into the area. So, 900 people move to the state of Florida every day. So, what they're trying to do now is plan for the next 10, 15 years of the state and how it's developing. They did talk about transportation and how vehicles are changing, and one of the things is, just with technology as it expands, that it's very interesting to see is that you can connect your watch, you will be able to connect your watch to your car so that it can detect, for instance, if you're having a heart problem or an issue, your car will automatically move over to the side of the road for you, so you don't have to worry about some of the things. So, just thinking about how they're looking at technology and that capability that's out there, and how they're going to deal with things moving on in the next decade.
What if it detects that you're like, maybe-
Intoxicated, or sleeping?
Well, yeah, some other influence.
Influence, I don't know, but you know what? It depends on, just thinking of all the data points out there, and that's what he talked about, is how many data points there are out there on it, and how things are just gonna start communicating, so you have less to, in a sense, less to worry about, just because things are gonna take over and move for themselves versus-
As this, next year, we get into 2020, it progresses, probably latter part of the year, third quarter, we, we'll be talking more about the impact of, of the AV phenomenon, autonomous vehicles, because it will, it's here a lot sooner than a lot of people think, and you're gonna see some of the impacts a lot sooner than you anticipated.
Yeah.
Some may be good, and some of them may not be good. It depends on, you know, how you look at it.
A little creepy. But how they're predicting roadways and things like that for the state moving forward, not just for the amount of the influx of residents coming in, but technology that's out there and changing, so. And all the best for a happy, healthy holiday.
Thank you. Thank you.
Not much of a report, but I'd like to first congratulate the mayor, Councilman Hamara, and Councilwoman, Councilwoman Samios for their reelection with that opposition, so it's good to have you guys on for another two years, and-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next year, they'll be coming soon. I would really hope everyone takes the census that we're getting seriously, because it really does make a huge impact, not only, you know, at our local level, but at the county and the statewide level, as far as money being allotted, and what sources of revenue we get. So, when you get the census, please fill it out.
Since you mentioned that, correct me if I'm wrong with this number, but I believe at the last census we took, because the percentage wasn't as high, it should've been, I think it was 78%, 78% for the village, we lost, what, about $4 million in funding that we would've received? So, it is, it is real, it's, you know, and it's real money in our pockets, and, and it's, I call it other people's money, because it's funding that flows down from the federal government. So, it's very real, in terms of us getting out and we're doing what we need to do to, our goal this year is 100%, all right, if we can get that, you know, count, accounting for all the residents in the village. But thanks for bringing that up. Anything else? Good.
Okay. Well, thank you. Good evening, everybody. And actually, I saw a number of $1,400 per person, per year, right? And so, you do the math, kind of a thing, we've got almost 40,000 people, you could see the huge impact when, when we miss people. And interestingly enough, one of the groups we miss a lot are kids under five, kind of an interesting thing. So, everybody's supposed to be counted. So, we're gonna keep talking about this, try to keep everybody thinking about it, engaged, and come March, I think you'll see more information about it. You'll be able to actually fill out the form online, first time ever, so hopefully that'll, that'll help with getting account accurate. And I look at it like we're getting our tax money back.
Right.
As, you know, it's kinda like, so if we don't do this, then our tax money goes someplace else. Kind of another way to think about it. Anyway, speaking of kids, reading is really, really important. We used to say it's fundamental. Well, anything we can do to encourage reading is something worthwhile doing. Every year, the Literacy Coalition of Palm Beach County has something called Read for the Record. And every year for the last five, six, seven years, we've been involved in that. And it's where members of the council, members of the staff, other community leaders go out and read the same book on the same day. And there's a little competition that goes on within the county, among the 39 municipalities, to see who can read to the largest number of kids with the largest number of readers, and the number of schools doesn't really count. But anyway, we're getting better and better every year. We set a personal record again this year, we're over 600. We've got a ways to go to catch up to Boynton Beach, who won again this year. But at least we get an honorable mention, so we'll, we'll hang this up along with our other plaques. I'll turn this over to our, our clerk. But it's, it's a fun thing to do, it is. It's really great to engage with the kids, read to them in the classroom, and then have a conversation about it afterwards, and hopefully they get excited about it, and maybe think about reading a little bit more than they would otherwise. Speaking of schools, one of the things we do is, we have an education advisory board meets once a month. Part of each one of our meetings is to put a spotlight on one of our schools, and give the school principal, and staff, and most enjoyably, the kids an opportunity to show what's going on in their, in their individual schools. This past Monday, gosh, it's been a busy week, we had an education advisory board, and the spotlight was on HL Johnson, or HLJ, as I like to refer to themselves. And we got to hear from the Little Jaguars, you know, a coral group, and the cheerleaders. It's a lot of fun. And if you like kazoo's, you really missed out on a, on a good deal, because the kids were fantastic. This is one of our A-rated schools, and it's been an A-rated school for the majority of its existence. And they bring all kinds of interesting programs, like STEAM, not just STEM, but the art pieces added in there. Really good school. Principal Jennifer Mikowski is an excellent principal, and this school really plays nicely into what we call the K through 12 continuum, where you can, if, if you have a child that starts out in STEM or STEAM, they can actually progress with that same kind of an orientation all the way through middle school, and then into high school. And so, they can really pick up on the engineering, the technology, and that kind of stuff, if they stay on that course. Powerful thing, good school, doing great things. Speaking of schools, scholarships. It's that time of the year, our first notification, our first announcement came out, Town Crier this past week, reminding everybody that we give out 10 $1,000 scholarships to graduating seniors who live in Royal Palm Beach, don't have to be going to Royal Palm Beach High School, but they do need to be residents of Royal Palm Beach. They have to be graduating in May of 2020, this coming year, and the application can be found online. It is a relatively straightforward application, needs to be filled out and submitted by Valentine's Day, February 14th. And then, they need to be available for interviews, and our education advisory board, our scholarship committee conducts the interviews, and this year, it'll be on a Saturday, April the 4th, so they need to be available for that. If you know anybody who could benefit from a $1,000 scholarship, make sure that they go online and, and fill out the form. If they have any questions, the number to call is 790-5101. So, I think I'll, I'll let it stand at that, okay?
Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. I had the privilege of attending the first reboot of the Issues Forum today. And as I reported last meeting, the four areas of focus are regional transportation network and mobility plan, housing, sea level rise and water issues, and then hurricane preparedness. So, in brief, the, the committee, we can call ourselves a committee, the forum, is, took a deferral on talking about regional transportation network, as there is a summit coming up later next year. And then, we talked a lot about housing, and really bundling it with homelessness, you can't really take one away from the other. So, really important to talk about those two issues together. Sea level rise, we talked about bundling that with the Water Resources Task Force, and so there's a learning process with regard to that piece. And then the last one was hurricane preparedness, where we think we can really be informed by IPARC, which are all the planning directors within our municipalities, who are really the experts, the technical experts on this. So, we'll meet again in February, I think it is, and we'll go forward from there. But the group is really collaborative in nature, trying to build consensus, and trying to see, look at these countywide issues as a whole, instead of parsing them out in everybody's different municipalities. So, I think we're off to a good start.
How often do they meet?
About quarterly.
About once a quarter?
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Keep it sponsored.
Happy holidays to everyone, and happy New Year, and all that good stuff.
No report, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Keith?
No report, other than to thank the councilwoman for the kind words, and wish everyone a happy holiday, and looking forward to working with you all next year.
So are we, Keith.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our reports.
At this time, more cards?
Two for 13, and two for 7.
Oh, okay. At this time, does anyone here have a petition they'd like to present to the council? Now would be the time to do that? No petitions tonight, okay. I'm closing the floor into petitions.
One more.
Number 13? Okay, good. And now we get the statements from the public. For those of you who got here a little late, and you're here for Agenda Item Number 13, we have modified the agenda, and Agenda Item will be the first regular agenda item we discuss tonight. That way, we give you all a chance to not have to sit through the entire meeting. More 13? All right. More 13, good. So with that, I do have one item for a non-agenda item. I hope I got the name right, Mr. Roger Morades. How close was I?
Very.
Oh, good, okay.
He seemed surprised.
It's always good when they get close, isn't it?
He was more surprised than you.
Well, it's not like the commercial, it's not okay.
It's Morades, but it's okay.
Okay.
I mean, Morades, that's fine. Name and address? Sure. And I'm definitely not gonna need three minutes, but Roger Morades, 167 Ponstellion Street, here in Royal Palm in La Mancha. So, I've only been in Royal Palm, I wanna say it was two years in July of 2019, so I don't have a whole lot of historical data, perspective, and whether or not this has been discussed in the past. But what I can tell you is, the amount of speeding coming down my street, going from where Okeechobee is to the roundabout is significant. You have folks running the stop sign, not only running the stop sign on Ponson Galiano, but they're doing it at 40, 45. They're definitely not going 25, I don't wanna say an astronomical number like 50, but definitely it's over 35 miles an hour.
Okay.
I see kids riding their bike, and every time I see this, I say a prayer for them. Because if one of these folks blows that stop sign, and there is a kid crossing the street-
Tragedy.
I cannot, cannot imagine what that's gonna happen. I know we've had more patrols and what have you, I just don't know how you get around the, the topic of not having what they call speed tables, or speed bumps, whether that's been discussed in the past. I don't know, you're sort of smiling at me, and-
Well, I'm not, I'm smiling because-
I figure it's been-
This is not a new issue, all right?
Got it.
And I'm very sorry that it's, what happens is, we have these spurts of people not behaving traffic-wise, and-
Right.
These are people who live in the village, it's not like the, you know, out of towners. And we, we ratchet up, you know, traffic enforcement and the motorcycle guys, and it gets a momentary correction, but then it goes back again. A few years ago, we did in fact enact a new policy in the village to address the question of if the local community wanted speed humps, or-
Right.
Some kind of corrective action taken. There is a remedy in place where that community can come together and petition us for an analysis, and then, you know, whatever boundary of streets or homes are involved in that analysis, then they will have a chance to, if the analysis says, yeah, what you guys are seeing is correct, and we need to do something, we'll make a design and present what that design looks like to the community, and they will then vote on it. And for it to go, you have to get a 50% plus one affirmative for it to go. So, there was a, we did, there was a policy in place, this has been a problem, you know, in different parts of the village, so I appreciate you coming tonight. So, no, no, Dan, if you have any more questions about-
Wow.
About suing that. We wanna make sure we hear it. I guess it's on loud.
Got it.
Please contact our village manager if you have, you know, you wanna look in what's going on.
Village manager is Raymond Legan?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thanks for coming, I appreciate it. Okay. Before I close the agenda, the, on to any additional comments on either non-agenda items or items on the consent agenda? Are there any? Seeing none, then we will proceed with the consent agenda.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Number one, approval of the minutes of the council regular meeting of November 21st, 2019. Two, adoption of resolution number 1938, a resolution of the Village Council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, adopting a revised schedule of fees and charges, specifically you peeling resolution 1926, providing that this schedule of fees and charges shall be available for inspection at all times at the village hall during regular business hours, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Three, adoption of resolution number 1935, a resolution of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, supporting the prohibition of underage drinking, and encouraging retailers, vendors, and other providers of alcohol to voluntarily post signs detailing the prohibition of and penalties related to underage drinking. Three, four, adoption of resolution number 1936, resolution of the Village Council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, amending the Village of Royal Palm Beach pension plan to provide for an update to those provisions of the plan that regulate the composition of the membership of the pension committee, providing an effective date and for other purposes. And five, approval of the village manager to execute a foreclosure registry services agreement by and between ProChamps and the Village of Royal Palm Beach, piggybacking off of a competitively procured Clay County agreement dated June 25th, 2019.
Okay. Any comments from members in council? There are no comments, a local motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion as second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that consent agenda was approved 5-0.
Yes, Mayor.
Now we move to the regular agenda. As stated earlier, in deference to all the people we have here who are concerned about Agenda Item Number 13, we will address, we will now move and address Agenda Item Number 13 as the first item on our regular agenda tonight. Agenda Item Number R13 is authorization for the village manager to purchase 180 Sandpiper Avenue, Royal Palm Beach, Florida, and demolish the structure. Your honor, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. The property at 180 Sandpiper was identified and presented to council at this year's budget workshop, as the village's highest priority for improving pedestrian, bicycle, and boat access to Commons Park, Recreation Center, Village Hall, Crestwood Middle School, Cypress Trails Elementary. Our mission statement states, "We will provide services and facilities to create an aesthetically pleasing, active, and connected hometown family community." We believe our community connected is a better community. We believe bringing great public spaces closer to where our residents live improves both the public spaces and the real estate value of the community, resulting in residents with a greater attachment to the community. Our comprehensive plan states, "We will develop a safe bicycle and pedestrian transportation system accessible to all major public and private facilities intended to increase existing facility capacities." The purchase of 180 Sandpiper will immediately and only provide additional half acre to Bobby Joe Lauder Park and boat access to Commons Park. That's what's on the agenda for tonight, and that's what the purchase of this property does. It would put a half an acre in public ownership, and would immediately allow for people within the canal system to be able to park on that piece of property and walk to Commons Park. With a future approval and construction of a bridge across the canal connecting to the FPL pathway, more than 6,000 residents living in the southeast quadrant of the village will have a shorter and more direct off-street pedestrian bicycle route to walk or ride to Commons Park. This connection will make the walk or bike ride up to two miles shorter than driving to Commons Park. The connection will also provide shorter and more direct off-street pedestrian bicycle access to the Sandpiper residents, to the restaurants and retail shops on State Road 80. With additional future approval and purchase of property potentially in the Counterpoint neighborhood along the FPL lines, a future off-street pedestrian and bicycle route could connect more than 2,500 residents in neighborhoods off of State Road 7 to Commons Park. This connection will also make the walk or bike ride for those residents up to four miles shorter than driving to Commons Park. Counterpoint residents would also gain a quick off-street route to Seminole Palms Park and the Commercial Plazas on State Road 80. In addition, the purchases 180 Sandpiper will facilitate reducing the parking and traffic burden at Commons Park during major events by being able to provide parking at Seminole Palms Park, where people could either walk or be shuttled to Commons Park, provide pedestrian and bike connectivity from the FPL pathway, which freely moves bikes and pedestrians' traffic from the north end of the village to the south end of the village to Commons Park without the intolerable need to cross existing driveways. The connection will allow friends and families to walk and bike between neighborhoods in lieu of driving. This is a step in the long-range plan of providing more non-motorized options to the public. Additional connections to Commons Park and FPL pathway will only further motivate people to get out of their cars. We have to focus on the long-term plan and the benefits of creating and expanding our non-motorized system. We believe that this is the biggest reason for supporting this project. This shows a commitment of the village toward improving transit, especially off-road pedestrian transit. This helps when applying for new grants. It is always helpful during grant applications to list the best ring system improvements that we already have, and related to the proposed grant project. We have been comparatively successful with grants for the non-motorized system because of our long-range term commitment to its construction. Providing safer, more direct, and numerous pedestrian transit options to younger residents could help them to be more active and stay out of trouble. Not needing car transport opens up opportunities to them, rather than just staying home or getting into trouble. Younger residents from the west side of the village can get themselves independently to and from jobs in the commercial areas of Southern Boulevard and 441, and students from the east side may be able to better participate in after-school activities like sports clubs, community service, and activities at the recreation center by having a safer access from the east side of the village to the center of the village. Increase through Commons Park. Increasing the usability of the FPL pathway will increase its public use. That, along with the lighting we are adding, will make the area safer for those who use it, and for those who live around it. Giving the public easier access to Commons will increase participation at events. Buying land to create pedestrian cut-throughs between neighborhoods and public facilities creates an image of being family-focused, pedestrian, and environmentally friendly village. Our mission statement is to provide service to, and facilities to create an aesthetically pleasing, active, and connected community. This project, and others like it, that are part of our long-term transit improvements, is in line with our mission. Such actions show that the village works to make itself a better place for residents and businesses. Since the village is mostly built out, the improvements to the village will come from better utilizing the space we have. Purchases like this is a great way to prepare the village to, for the future and its future residents. Staff is recommending the purchase of 180 Sandpiper Avenue with a purchase price of $320,000 along with a reasonable closing cost. Due to the condition of the structure, $60,000 was reduced from the appraised value for comparison to other recent sales resulted in an appraised value of $253,000. Staff is, staff worked out a willing seller, willing buyer transaction with the owner of the property to sell the property for $320,000. It is staff's intent, if the purchase is approved, to demo the structure. Staff will then pursue grants for constructing a bridge and walkway from the FPL pathway to Commons Park. The grant application will be presented to council at a future public hearing.
So you're saying that if we agree to purchase the property, there's still other phases? And there'll be opportunity for a more ample public comment before we move to those other phases?
That is correct. What this does is gives us basically an area to, that the public now, since the property along the canal will become public, for them to be able to... The only access it gives right now will be for them to be able to park their boats there and then walk into Commons Park. The, any future grant that we're applying for to do a bridge would make all the other great things that I read in my memo happen.
Alright, so I just wanted to be clear. Tonight, whatever decision is made is not a final decision that says all of these other things, your name, are going to happen. It's just giving you authorization tonight to make the acquisition, if, if it's approved. I just want to be clear. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Alright, before we take comments from council, we have many comment cards here. So I'd like to start with Mike Gershberg.
Hi, my name's Mike Gershberg, 287 Sandpiper Avenue. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. There's gonna be many people here that have a lot to say about the whole bridge situation and on Sandpiper. I'm not gonna hit on some of those points because I know they will. Um, I'm gonna address you guys simply from the fact of, I'm not sure if everybody knows, but I've been for probably two to three years now the captain of the neighborhood watch throughout the whole Willows, section one and two. 1,200 or so homes, 300 or so, um, members participating and more growing every day. I think with the help of Captain Nyax, the whole PBSO, and everybody backing us, we've changed the neighborhood quite a bit lately. Lot of participation, lot more awareness. It's become more safe. Statistically, things have changed, and this has been a very big focus of mine. So my questions come from not only residents who have emailed me, but some personal on my end as well. First of all, before I forget about it, I'd like to address the boat thing because as a boat owner, uh, and I know the canal system very well, um, for many years, there's no room to park a boat. It's a canal. It's not a lake. It's, it's a size for a boat to get by. End of that subject. I just would like to know what measures are gonna be brought forward to make this, if it happens, a safe situation because it's great to get everybody involved in the park, and I understand that situation, but the park is located within my neighborhood. So the boat, uh, the traffic coming from the power lines and everything, it all infringes on our neighborhood. So, um, between the people who live next door to the bridge, to the people who live in the neighborhood, the increase in traffic, um, people using it as an escape route, there's already all kinds of mischief going on on that back power line area. I ride around in the golf cart. I see broken beer bottles and everything. I see kids out there.
Under the FPL thing?
Under the power lines.
That's been...
All kinds of stuff going on.
Yeah.
So now we have a bridge going across there. We have a walkway that's gonna take people through quite a long way of that area, which is unlit, which I'm sure that would be a later situation. Um, the walk, I just want to make it known, and I know the area extremely well, it's a long walk. People bring their kids, their wagons, their chairs for all these events that I attend, every single one. Um, that's a long walk with those type of things. I don't think it's gonna deter somebody by not going to the park. But the main concern is, is what is it gonna do? It's gonna leave a direct reflection on our neighborhood and specifically Sandpiper, which I live on, which you know aware of all the problems that we've had. It's gonna bring more unwanted traffic and attention to that road.
Just so I'm clear, when you say traffic, you mean people traffic, not motor vehicle traffic?
Correct. I mean, not only people, but, you know, from a neighborhood sense, people that don't belong, you know?
Okay. You're your neighbors, but okay.
No, I'm just thinking, uh, you know, outside of the neighborhood walking. If, if I lived next door to that property, I'd be having a cow right now, and you know I'm pretty good at that.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Randy Shank?
Mayor, before your talks, I just want to remind...
About the lights?
The audience, well, that, well, to, that, yeah, we do have a project funded to light that pathway. That will be happening in, in the near future. This is about buying the land. There will be another future public meeting about the bridge and any mitigating factors that we'll explore because of the installation of the bridge.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. The bridge, that, that's not what we're approving tonight. Just want to be clear on that. And we will have more ample opportunity to get input, ideas, feedback from, from the community on whatever's gonna happen there. But, yeah, I'm glad you reiterated that. Okay, I'm sorry, sir. Your honor.
Hello, my name is Randy Shank. I do live on, uh, 173 Grous Lane, uh, which is directly across from 180 Sandpiper. Um, now that you stated...
Is that around the other side of Bobby, that little park?
Correct.
That's where that little...
There's about four houses. Yeah, there's about four houses of one of them. But now that you said that about the bridge, I was just concerned about the bridge, uh, kind of piggybacking on what Mike said, uh, the unwanted traffic. Um, you know, I moved out here from West Palm. Uh, I have two daughters for a safe neighborhood. I know Councilman Jeff said about the schools. That's why, that's why I live here now.
How long you been here?
Uh, 2014. 2014.
Good.
April 2014. But that, uh, the Bobby Joe Lauder Park, I don't think it's well-lit. I don't think there's a lot of security. I worked my previous job over the last years until about the following year. I would get home about 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning, and I saw a lot of looting. I would see drug paraphernalia. I would just see, you know, people that shouldn't be in the park at that night. It's closed. Um, you know, and I have daughters that go over there, and then we see this stuff, you know? I, I don't want that. So the, uh, the bridge is just, I think it's gonna bring the unwanted traffic. Um, like Mike said, it's two mile walk, you know? Families are gonna drive. People who are gonna come across the bridge are people you probably don't want. I don't want that easy access.
Okay.
You know, come, come to the neighborhood. And I'm, and I have a, you know, front porch view right there. I'm right there. I see it all the time. I'm seeing it day in and day out without the bridge.
Do, do you see it?
With the bridge, I'm just very concerned for me, my family, and...
Let me ask you a question though. You say you see incidents going on in a park. Do you report those to the police?
I, I've called the cops several times.
Okay, good.
I, I've had my life threatened. I've had my life threatened.
Good. Wow.
I had to call PBSO several times.
Okay. I'm glad that at least you did that because that's the right thing to do.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's my concern.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Randall Ives?
Randall Ives, I live at 10627 Misty Lane inside Counterpoint Estates. I, um, to expand on Mike's, I am also the Counterpoint Estates Crime Watch Captain.
Neighborhood watch?
And, um, so my concerns are, are less about the purchase of the property, which I wasn't completely aware of what, what we, or how deep we would go into this conversation. I haven't seen any long-term plans. One of my concerns would be the FPNL easement. Any access from that, I, I, I just don't see it as being favorable.
So you're talking about access not going the other way?
Well, so, w- w- we're not even talking about access from Counterpoint because I don't even know what properties you're speaking of to, that's going to connect Counterpoint because just putting a bridge to that easement does not help the Counterpoint residents whatsoever in any way, shape, or form. None. There's no access.
Yeah.
That, that would be, that would be a, what we did, and what we did is we identified in the, in the budget, desired properties to improve connectivity to Commons Park in the center of the village. This is our number one priority. Our second priority is a house along the FPL easement in Counterpoint that makes sense for, for connection into Counterpoint and the, the walkways and, and paths within there. And it would only be bike and pedestrian. We have not identified a home. What we did on the, in the budget was we identified basically every house along the FPL easement. The ones towards the center, I think, it'd probably make more sense and have a higher priority. We weren't pursuing that, and this is, this is the first connection to a dominoes of effect that, what these people are gonna state their concern about. But it does come in pieces. This is, this piece is buying it. It only gives us boat access. The next piece will be building a bridge, which will be a grant and will be public projects and will be, will be, uh, future meetings, and then the purchasing of any other additional properties will be a public meeting.
Sure, I understand. So, so my, some of my concerns still would be lighting along that FPNL easement. It's, it's dark. I, my neighbors...
We definitely, whatever happens, if whatever happens, lighting will be...
Sure.
Extremely, you, you guys come back complaining to us that there's too much light if we do this. I'm just telling you, so, yeah, we get that.
So, uh, I, I mean, I have some other talking points. I'll save my time if we're gonna have other discussions about this because I do have concerns.
I mean, yeah, this is, as we go forward, we, we'll have many opportunities. We will certainly want to get additional continued input from the, from the public.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
I'll see you then.
Okay, thank you for coming. Thanks for comments.
Mr. Mayor, just real quick, just real quick, one of the things, because we're talking about the lighting issue, the other part is, is that there is money in the budget for security cameras as well. So those are things that we have in that area.
And perhaps, uh, police call box, like in some of the parks currently, it would be nice as well.
That's something...
Take, we're taking note of that. Okay, good. Okay, Estelle, Estelle, where's Estelle? I don't want to mess up your last name. Estelle, are you here?
She went outside.
Bruxet?
Hold on.
There's someone's on.
Are you Estelle? I don't think so.
No.
Is anybody here named Estelle? Alright, I'll hold this out in case she shows up. But she, in her comment card, she's opposed, and she says she wanted to speak, so...
Bracielli?
Bracielli, yeah.
Giselle.
It's a G.
Oh, is it? I thought it was an E. I was close. Estelle, Giselle. It's a pretty last name, but I didn't want to destroy.
Thank you. Alright, thank you. Um, my name is Giselle Bracielli. I live on 107 Swan Parkway West. Uh, so fully understanding that this is a multi-phase project and all that, but overall, um, I wanted to speak about the project. So, my husband and I were made aware of the plans to purchase 180 Sandpiper, uh, to build ultimately a bridge that would connect Counterpoint and the Willows. We do not support this plan. So, my husband and I bought our house in the Willows two years ago, and during our search to find a home in Royal Palm Beach, the option to purchase in Counterpoint came up on more than one occasion due to the quantity of houses available in Counterpoint. So, like any smart home buyer, we did our due diligence. We visited and drove through the neighborhood. We spoke to current residents. We looked at the crime report. We looked, we spoke to law enforcement. Ultimately, our findings resulted in us having our realtor remove Counterpoint as a prospective, uh, neighborhood. So we waited, and we saved, and we purchased our home in the Willows near Commons Park. So, you can imagine my frustration upon learning that the neighborhood I selected and invested in made, uh, has now made plans to connect the neighborhood I explicitly chose not to live in. Additionally, adding to my frustration, accessibility to the park that I paid for is sort of casually being given to those that chose not to make the investment to live closer to the park. So this whole situation very much reminds me of when decisions are made to build walls near highways, and the folks that paid less for houses near the highway now get silence while those that live a little further away get all the noise. Um, we do not want the noise. We do not want the foot traffic through our streets. I do not want the potential crime. I don't want the littering. I don't want our neighborhood to join by ridiculously expensive pedestrian bridge that's already expensive, let alone buying another house. I am however more than happy to deal with the traffic caused by the less than three traffic-inducing events that happen every year. Thank you for hearing our concerns, and I hope that you acknowledge, uh, our neighborhood's request to dismiss this plan. Thank you.
Alright, thank, thank you for your comments. We're, we're noting that you got an applause. We'll, we'll note that. No, thank you. Thank you. Bo Marburger? Marburger?
Marburger.
Marburger, okay.
Bo Marburger, 189 Sandpiper Avenue, 200 yards from our house to the house that you're looking to buy. Uh, we, we moved there, my wife and I, 2008. We have three young daughters, six years old, three years old, and two months old. Uh, we're opposed to this plan. I know you say that it's the first step, that there's no bridge being talked about, but once these things start, they, they tend to snowball.
Not, not in Royal Palm Beach, but okay.
That being said, my focus is on, on the financial side of this. I'm a commercial loan officer, been, uh, lending money for, for over a decade in Palm Beach County. Uh, I see this as being very financially poor stewards. I think you're, you're rewarding bad behavior for the owner of this property to bail them out from whatever they've been doing over these past few months.
That's an interesting perspective. I don't, I, I don't see how we're bailing them out. It's a willing buyer, willing seller.
Well, there's no way that they could sell the property in this current state. There's no way that they could get a loan in its current state.
I don't think that's accurate, but okay.
It is accurate.
You could, you want to comment on that? I mean, I, I don't think, that doesn't, you don't know? No? Go ahead. Yeah. Because I, we talked about this. Go ahead. Yeah, finish your comments.
You're overpaying for it. It's, you, you guys are the government. You're not private citizens. You, you know, you're not in the business to own private land. You take one more, uh, taxpayer property tax off the market by, by buying this property and then thinking about buying another property in Counterpoint? So I, I don't know why you continue to, to buy up private land.
Well, I think...
It's not necessary.
I think in, in the village manager's presentation, he was trying to give everybody the big strategic picture because this is, this is much bigger than this, this one house. This is a whole network, a strategy that we've been, no, working on for several years. And one of the, one of the things we've gained over the years is we have many projects that we fund through grants, which means it's not our, our local taxpayers' money. It's grant money. I call it OPM, okay? Other people's money that we have been using for many years to fund projects in this village. So the bigger picture is, is really a much different scenario. You're looking at this like, like a microcosm, and it's not.
I think you're rewarding bad behavior, that you're, you're overpaying to whoever owns this property when, if it went out into the open market...
If the people kept the property...
If the people had a chance to bid, it would be much different.
Alright, you're, you're in the loan business, so I'm not gonna debate you.
It's poor financial stewardship, is my opinion. And I would ask, how many people are, are for this and how many people are opposed?
You're here to address the council. You're not here to...
These are the voters.
But that's not who you're here to address. You're here to address...
I would ask that before you guys vote.
Okay.
Because the ones that will elect you or not elect you the next time around.
Well, now why, why are you gonna go there?
So...
Right?
Did you want me to, did you want me to address anything first?
Go ahead. What's your question?
I, what was his name?
Bo.
Bo. Would you mind, I, I just had a question for you because you, you do have an expertise in this area, um, and you, and you looked at it, and if you don't know the answer, just tell me you don't know the answer.
Sure.
But, um, what do you think the village is overpaying for this property? What do you think, in your estimation, the...
I'm not an appraiser, so I, I won't, I won't speak to that, but in its current condition, I, I think...
Current condition isn't good. I, I've seen that.
Correct.
And the price was reduced by $50,000.
Open market is what would dictate it. So that, that's how I would see.
And to finish...
I, I don't, again, I don't know if they're, they're late on their payments, if they're current on their mortgage. I know they have one, and...
What I'm trying to get at is, if you have any knowledge of...
They had a lien that was released.
What you think this would go for, because it says here $320,000, and if you know or have any insight...
I would say it'd be the land value. The land value's not 300 whatever thousand. It's...
Thank you.
185,000. You've got to put aside, you're gonna pay 30,000.
Thank you.
You're gonna want, you're gonna...
That's the way. Don't worry.
It's property.
All right, you, you want to comment?
Can address some of it. You know, that, when we identified the parcels within the village that we wanted to acquire to prove access to, to the center of the town, Commons Park, we did it with the idea that we weren't going to condemn these properties, which in a lot of cases would be more expensive. This is, this is a willing seller, willing, willing buyer transaction. The property was appraised at 250,000, $3,000 in its current condition. The owner did buy it for less than that. That sale would, that sale happened not in, in a, in an open market. It happened between people who knew each other. The appraiser said the property is worth $320,000, less $60,000 for the improvements to be done. The property owner had invested in materials to finish that project and was in the process of building out that, that house and improving it, purchased the windows, purchased several things. And we didn't get into the detail of how much of that $60,000 is already at risk with his, with his contractors and with his materials that he's purchased. But for the public, we thought this was a better idea than buying a home that was completely intact because it, it is a win-win for both. It is more than he paid, there's no question. It is more than the value of 253 minus whatever his out-of-pocket costs already are for what is, whatever his contracting cost and materials costs are. But this, this, I believe this is a good price for willing seller, willing buyer, mainly because it is the number one piece of property that we wanted. It is the top choice piece of property. And without the Counterpoint connection, it makes connections to Nautical Lakes, it makes connections to Seminole Palms, Seminole, Seminole Lakes neighborhood. It makes connections to the, the county park. It makes connections to all the residents that, that are on the State Road 7 and south of State Road 80. It makes a very close connection for all the residents in, in, in the new development south of Boca Chobe. So, this, this was our number one piece of property that, that made a, a short distance for people to bike and walk to the park. What's amazing is how much shorter it is for them to, to, to bike. The people in Nautical Lakes, Seminole Lakes, they got a two and a half, a three mile car ride to get to the park. They're going to have, you know, less than a half mile bike ride. The people in Counterpoint on the backside who have a five mile car ride now to the park will have a quarter mile to a half mile walk or bike. So, it, it is, of course, two more approvals, two more public hearings for that to happen for Counterpoint. But this was a key piece of property. It was a willing seller, willing buyer transaction. We're not condemning properties to make this happen and it's, it's, it's consistent with the appraisal that we got.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Jessica Brent?
Hi, Jessica Brent, 200 Martin Circle. I am opposed to the purchase of the land. First off, just because it's almost $70,000 above what the land is actually valued and I don't know anybody in this room that would pay $70,000 more than what something is appraised for. The other reason I'm opposed to it is because I'm looking at that map that was put out and how the, the bridge would connect these neighborhoods and the number over here with the one mile radius of 2,719 residences. Now, my neighborhood over here in the top right corner on Martin Circle and all of those, that whole entire area, none of us would ever be using that bridge because we already have another bridge on the other side. And then if you look at the properties that are above the little orange, there's about one street in blue, everything in blue and yellow above that, probably would also not be using that bridge because there is a big canal going in between those properties. Then the properties to the south of this bridge have got canals bordering them as well and there's, there's big open land, it looks like, in there also. And it's just, it's right up against the straight shot that they've already got to get to the park without the need of the bridge. So, I think the, the building of the bridge is a very expensive project. I, I understand you're, you're trying to do it for the greater good, but there's, there's a lot more land and a lot more things that would have to be purchased in order to build a bridge to give all of these people access to that park for the better.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, this concludes all the comment cards I have for agenda item 13. But if anyone is here who has not submitted a card would like to speak on this side, on agenda item 13, come on up.
Need to read your name and address.
Roman Braccielli with 227 Sandpiper Avenue in Royal Palm Beach. And pretty much my concern with this bridge is that not only is it $320,000 to buy this property, but then with the demolition costs and with the bridge costs, with whether it's taxpayer money or the different plate, like places you're getting the money, it's really, I don't see it as an investment that we should be making. Village manager, multiple times in your statement of why we should do this, you said, this neighborhood gets this. This neighborhood gets this. And nowhere in that did I hear what Sandpiper Avenue gets, except they get traffic, whether it's foot or whether it's by boat or whatever the case may be. And if the people in the other neighborhoods wanted easy access to Commons Park, they should have moved in our street. You know, people who live close to Commons Park, we pay high property tax because we live on the park.
Because the value of the land is higher.
Correct.
Okay.
But the thing is that whether it's a property tax that is being used, is any property tax being used for the purchase of these things, whether in whatever phase. Whatever that answer is, my concern is that people are benefiting when I don't see anything in Counterpoint that I would go visit. You know what I mean? I, I have
Be, be nice.
No, I am. I'm, I'm just being honest.
Okay.
I'm just being honest. I, I don't have any friends there, which maybe I should make some, but
That's good.
The case is
Make some new friends.
That we live on the park and I don't see any reason to really buy this property at such a high value. And Commons Park has a parking lot. And I get that if we purchase this land to eventually try to purchase the bridge and to build it, yes, people can come without driving, but we have a parking lot and people can walk already, add two miles to it
Okay.
If they're going to walk.
You, you never had to deal with having to answer questions.
No, I am. I just thought I had three minutes to speak.
They always ask me about traffic.
I'm sorry.
They always ask me about traffic and this is something that would have addressed a little bit of traffic, but I get it.
A little bit.
There's two sides to every issue. Go ahead.
And then the last portion is that we're deciding tonight whether to move in purchasing the land. And then eventually we'll have a conversation about building the bridge. Well, what if we purchase the land and don't build the bridge? It sounds like there's already a decision that's been made, kind of like the street, um, street bump issue.
That's an excellent question. You want to answer that, Ray? If we purchase the land and decide not to do the bridge?
That's a future decision by this council that will be at a public meeting. But I, I, but I'll tell you, I, I still think putting this in public ownership and if this generation doesn't want to deal with it, putting it in public ownership and letting somebody in the future deal with it, I think is well worth it.
I understand. I just feel like if we're making the decision for purchasing the property, it seems like the decision's already been made to do the rest.
No, that's not true. That's absolutely not true. I'm telling you that for
I'm, I'm assuming what the 320-plus thousand dollars is going to buy us if we don't do the bridge. Are we going to do a 20-spot parking lot? Are we going to put a little Chuck E. Cheese, like a Wendy's? Like, what are we going to do if we purchase the property and not the bridge?
We don't build commercials, we don't do that.
Well, I'm curious to see if the 320-plus is going to be wasted or not.
We'll create a boat parking place.
That's what we would do.
That's what we'll do.
If we come to place a parking
That's exactly what we'll do.
So, my only concern is more traffic.
All right. Thank you for comments, sir. Appreciate it. I know what you're going to say, there's, there's no room there.
Mm-mm.
Come on up.
Why don't you let a lady go first?
Oh, I didn't see her.
She's already up there.
She has to go first.
No problem.
Yeah. Stephanie Adams?
Yes, Stephanie Adams. I reside at 165 Sandpiper Avenue. I know that tonight's more focused about purchasing the property, using it for boat access. Can someone explain that? How are we going to use this for boat access? Is there going to be a dock? Is there going to be stairs to climb up the canal bank? Those sorts of issues.
That's what we put in the budget. That's what we would propose in a future budget. That is correct.
The answer to your question is yes.
That's in future budget or that's being approved with this move? Because you stated that purchasing this property
We would, we would plan for that in a future budget.
Would allow us to use that.
We would plan for that in a future budget, yes. It's not budgeted now because we don't own the land.
Okay, so it's kind of the same deal as the bridge. That will be in the future as well as the boat access.
That is correct.
So, tonight is not, we will not immediately be able to use that property for boat access.
Well, actually, you could. You could just pull up on the land and walk up. It would not be easy, as easy as stepping on a dock, but
Okay.
Many people pull up onto the land and do that. So, it would be public access from, from the point we owned it.
And do we have any idea how many boats we would be able to park at this property to make it worth spending this much money?
More than any other piece of property. Because it's on the corner.
So, three, four?
More than any other piece of property. I do not know. It's on the corner.
Yeah, just, I mean, many of you guys live in the area, you know the width of the canals.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Go ahead, 30 seconds.
All right, first off, wouldn't it be a brilliant idea if we voted first on the idea before we purchased the property? That's like astonishing. Okay, that's number one. Number two, I'm going to entertain this boat thing again. I live on the water, probably better than anyone in here, other than maybe Rob Hill. I know that waterway better than anyone. I was the president of the Bassmasters here for 12 years. I conducted tournaments on the water. I know exactly what the water's like, which it's garbage, maybe we should spend money on fixing the water. But there is nowhere, this is not going to be a marina. Come on. It's, there's not enough room for two boats to go down the canal. If one is parked, there's not going to be room for another boat. That is just preposterous.
All right, that's it, 30 seconds. Thank you. Thank you for the extra input on the water issue. We have a, we had a request come in to have something read into the record.
Did you want her
You can read it. Yeah, I'm going to ask Councilwoman Samuels to read that into the record.
We did, and I appreciate all the emails that everyone sent over, but there was one particular one that Tracy Byberry sent over from 292 Sandpiper Avenue and she said if she was unable to make it, just to have it read into the record. Dear Royal Palm Beach Village Council members, please do not approve regular agenda item number 13 to purchase the abandoned home and land at 180 Sandpiper Avenue with the intent of demolishing the home to provide a bridge and walkway from the FPL pathway to surrounding neighborhoods. We have been the homeowner of 292 Sandpiper Avenue since March of 1996. We enjoy our access to Commons Park inside our neighborhood. However, it does usually bring extra traffic and safety concerns during special events at the park. We believe adding the extra access from 180 Sandpiper to Counterpoint and other communities will only increase these safety concerns. It will likely provide more opportunities for illegal activity in Bobby Joe Lauder Park between 180 Sandpiper and the Commons Park access path. It will also give criminals a faster escape route out of the park on foot, bike, or motorcycle when law enforcement is trying to apprehend them. As long as the residents and taxpayers, we respectfully request the village of Royal Palm Beach does not approve regular agenda item number 13. Thank you, Brad and Tracy.
Okay, we got that, Diane? In the record. We have another?
Yes, please.
Come on up.
Okay, my name is Lisa Marburger. I have lived, I didn't completely fill it out yet. My name is Lisa Marburger. I live in the Willows. I've lived in the Willows for 20 years. I've owned my house in the Willows for 12 years.
Where, where in the Willows?
189 Sandpiper.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm very, very close to this path, whether it becomes a boat dock, whether it becomes a parking lot, whether it becomes a bridge, whatever it's going to become. I'm going to be very, very close to it, very close to the pedestrian traffic. I bought in the Willows because I liked the neighborhood. The neighborhood was calm. I had lived in there for eight years before I considered purchasing my own house there. So, I know the neighborhood well. And what I would ask of each of you is just imagine if this was your neighborhood that now is dramatically going to be changed. And I know it may not seem like it's going to be dramatically changed, but we live there. And so, for us, this is a huge change. I understand in theory what you guys are trying to do and it's great, let's make this community accessible, but it directly impacts us. And as far as I've been here, not one person from our neighborhood has gotten up and said, we love this idea, we'd like for you to do it. Everybody has said, please don't do this.
Yeah, I've been listening for that. I haven't heard that either.
Yeah, nobody wants it in our neighborhood. And that's all that I can ask you guys. If this were your neighborhood and you didn't like the idea and all of a sudden it, it's like this bulldozer coming in, making this huge change, how would that make you feel? We spent a lot of money on our houses. Yes, as you said, our home values are higher and that's why we pay higher property taxes. But as was explained to me by Palm Beach County, that's because we live on the park. So, if we're paying, our houses are valued at more because we're on the park, it, it's kind of like a circular effect there.
Just understand though, Palm Beach County has a separate taxing authority from us. We're two separate entities.
Well, I understand the tax budget
I just want to just point that out since you mentioned
But the valuation is done by Palm Beach County, correct?
Yeah, but, no, well, the valuation is done by the property appraiser.
Of Palm Beach County, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
So, that's, that's what I meant. Palm Beach County Property Appraiser is the one who sets the values for our homes. So, as they've explained to me, my house, my property taxes are higher because I live on the park. So, because of that, now I'm sharing this space.
Home value, yeah. Okay.
Again, I just ask, imagine if this was your neighborhood. I know there's a couple of people who've made comments who you kind of like shrugged your shoulders or shook your head to. And I just respectfully ask that you consider, this is our home. This is where we live. This is where we sleep at night.
I got it.
We want to sleep and know we are safe. We want to sleep and know we don't have different neighborhoods coming in. There are natural boundaries, there are man-made boundaries. And let's not drastically adjust them.
We want you to sleep and feel safe as well.
Thank you.
That's, in fact, our number one priority
Thank you.
Of everything. But thank you for your comments.
Thanks.
Okay, is there anyone else would like to comment? Going once? Going twice? There is a hand. Okay, come on down.
I'm not contesting. I don't want to make this stuff or do this stuff, but I just, the opposition. Sorry. My name is Jessica O'Keefe and I live at 108 Heron Parkway. I remember years back when the purchase of 109 Heron Parkway for the entrance into Commons Park and everybody
I'm sorry, did you say you lived in Heron Parkway?
108 Heron Parkway. I live across the street from the Heron Parkway entrance to Commons.
Got it.
And there was many opposition from everybody. The purchase price is too high, it's too outrageous, you're gonna have bulldozers, and now it's beautiful. I love walking over there. I love that my children have a safe path to get there. I love it. So, and for those of you that said that Counterpoint is, we are connected, the Willows is connected to Counterpoint through Bob White.
Bob White, yeah.
You can get into Counterpoint as a pedestrian.
Ma'am, just address your comments to us, please.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. No, no, they'll, they'll hear you, but...
You're in little bits and pieces, and I'm just trying to, that, just because you don't want an entrance into Counterpoint, we already have an entrance into Counterpoint.
Okay.
If there's pedestrian walking paths...
They can't, are you speaking to the mic?
I was speaking to the mic, sorry.
All right, now you gotta do everything you got to do from the beginning.
No.
No, I'm joking, I'm joking.
I normally don't do this. So I just wanted to, I am for the project, and I want this village to be accessible pedestrian, and I want this village to have bikes and paths for everybody to enjoy. And that is just my piece.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak? Now would be the time on agenda item R13. Going once? Going twice? One more? Wow, that works, eh?
There we go, we got it.
Arthur Charpen, 165 San Piper Avenue. My biggest problem with this is that the logistics are not on point at all. Asked, how many boats can be there? Have no clue. No answer to it. But you said initially, the reason we're purchasing this right now is for boat access. But you don't know how many boats. It makes no sense. You say that it's a quarter-mile walk for some people, but it really isn't a quarter-mile walk for anybody if that bridge goes in. It makes no sense. There's, there's canals in the way, there's other things in the way. You don't walk in a straight path. So that's my biggest problem with this, is logistics are not on point at all.
What do you, what do you do for, your daytime job?
Maintenance. I've done many things in my life, though.
You sound like an engineer, I just wondered.
No, no.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Have a great one.
Okay. All right. I'm serious now. Going once? Going twice?
I'm back.
Going three times? Okay, I'm closing public comment on agenda item R13, and I'll be looking to take comments from members on council, starting with. Go ahead, you got a comment?
Actually, well, and it's, go ahead.
Let me just make one, one comment before we go on here. The woman that got up right before this last comment, I have been here and went through all the, the fear of us buying Commons Park when it was a golf course, and the fear of all the neighbors adjacent to that golf course, and now that it's gonna be a public piece of property. And we heard all the public comments about how bad that is gonna be for them, and how bad that people will be able to be in this public park and, and see that their back of their homes is rot, and steal from them. We promised the residents that we would build a nice public park, that they would be proud to have any in their backyard. I think we've succeeded at that. A for sale sign that comes up on any house in San Piper now doesn't stay up very long. The people that live there call people they know a house is for sale, and it doesn't stay on the market very long. It is a very desirable place to live. 109 Heron, there was a lot of fear when we, when we purchased that to make that, that access point. We just heard from the person that lives next to it, that loves it. I've heard from many people in that area that love it. This, this will be the same in the long run. People will love it. It will help improve values in the village. We will do everything we can to mitigate the impact. And I think when it's done, it won't be any different than those other two circumstances, where it'll be something that'll be, that'll be enjoyed by many people to come. And I, I do think continuing this bike pedestrian program and making these connections is very important to the, to the, keeping Royal Palm Beach relevant going forward to the next generation.
Okay.
Actually, that was the point I was gonna bring up, were those people who were living where they are now, when it was a golf course, and then when it was being proposed as a park. So I know when we moved into the village, we actually looked in there, it was still a golf course. And when they turned into a park, I, I said, you know what, I'm really glad we didn't move there, because I didn't want the traffic and the noise and what it was becoming. And then now I'm like, well, I wish we did buy there, because we would've been closer to the park. So it was just more the fact of, if you went through this before when it was a golf course and now it was a park, did you have these same feelings? Were the issues still there? Was the fear there between safety and traffic, and those concerns now that we're facing again? So that's what I wanted to bring up.
No, no, no more. The public comment I gave you, one, two, three.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to talk.
No, I can't, I can't do that, 'cause if I do that for you, then I gotta do it for everybody. Public comment is closed, I'm sorry, sir.
Jan, go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate everybody who came out and gave us your thoughts on this, I really do. We have a citizen summit every year, and I don't know if you all attended or not, but one of the things that always comes up is access to the park. And it's really important that we try to connect our community as much as possible. We're talking about our residents here, residents who are gonna walk on foot, and who are your neighbors. And I think it's really important that we try to come together on this.
So, so first of all, two of the gentlemen who represented the Neighborhood Watch, they've done a great job over the last two or three years, and they know their neighborhood's probably better than anybody else, because they wander around. And so I, I value all of the input, but especially from their point of view. I understand the concerns, and I do remember what it was like going through the discussion about 109 Heron access. And what, what came out of that, and I see somebody shaking his head, so let me, let me address the, the head shaking, because if you were gonna say, "That's different", I agree with you totally. I was gonna say that it's a different situation. So without getting involved in the conversation, but, so yeah, I acknowledge that. But I also know, I went out there and I stood there with like 24 residents, and eventually they took me around and showed me all their concerns and that kinda thing, and ultimately, we addressed most of those. Not gonna satisfy everybody, you're not. And there's uncertainty associated with anything you do. And so everybody didn't walk away from that experience feeling totally comfortable. But what we have heard, what we heard from one person about 109, is just, it turned out a heck of a lot better than most people realized it was, it was gonna be. There were concerns about, so you guys are gonna open this thing up for vehicle traffic? We know you'll do that. No, we, we haven't done that, but we paid particular attention to that, pulled up bollards and did things to make sure that it was addressed. So where I'm going with this is I'm wondering if there's anything that can be done by way of, of being specific about a design that ensures that the dark areas that are now dark get lit, that actually turn something that people are concerned about into something that's a benefit to, to the community. I, I think about the FPL access or the Eastman area, that's dark out there, that is, talk about a great place for people who are, have bad intentions to hide and gain access, that's a great place for it right now. Now, clearly, we have one initiative already underway to try to light that area for a number of reasons, not the least of which is public safety. Well, if we were to do something like this bridge with the spirit of conceptual connectedness, and, and I realize it's a concept, and I realize that's a reality, if I was living next to it, I certainly probably feel somewhat different about it, no doubt about it. The bottom line is, you know, we're trying to do something that's really good for the entire community, and, and we got over, I'd guess we have over $30 million invested in that, in that park. The more use we can get out of it, you talk about, you know, well, you're paying more for it. You wanna do a business discussion? Let's talk about getting our money's worth out of that park, and by providing more access and that type of thing. So these are all the kinda considerations that, that at least are rattling around in my head right now, trying to figure out what, what the right thing to do is here. So I'm still trying to figure it out, haven't, haven't come to it yet, but I do think there's some potential benefit here to providing lighting and more attention to areas that right now are dark and, and maybe more problematic than even you all know. So, but maybe with the exception of the two gentlemen that are from the Neighborhood Watch. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from members on council? Richard?
I guess my, my two cents would be, I, I am one who has raised, tired of me here saying this for the past forever, but a council did do something that was, you know, next to my neighborhood. If anyone's been down Southern Boulevard heading west, you see a construction going on, it's been going on for the last 16 years. And that's based on a council decision that, you know, the people came out and said, "We don't want it," and they did it. So I know what, what the council can, can do to really impact your neighborhood tremendously, and it's still going on in my life. I think this, you know, globally overall, is a good thing for Royal Palm Beach, getting more access and more people to the park. I mean, that's something that's in our strategic plan, that's what we wanna do. This park isn't just for the residents of San Piper, it's for the residents of all of Royal Palm Beach. However, several of the, several of the speakers tonight hit my point, which is the cost. I really do have an issue with spending that much money on something, and from my point of view, as several of you have raised tonight, I would not wanna put $320,000 into a property that ultimately we would not build the bridge on, and not go forward. And, and if those things, like I've seen next door to my house, things that are proposed, things that never happened, I don't think that would be the situation here, because it's the village doing it, but we don't know what the future holds. So that is where I am. I do think it's a good idea, and it's a good project, but I don't know that I'm willing to spend everyone's tax money on that.
Okay. This has been a very interesting discussion this evening, and, and I'm really thankful for, for the feedback and input. Although I support the global, or the goal, the more strategic plan that we've had in place for several years of creating more connectivity throughout the village, I absolutely support that strategy. But I gotta tell you, I don't know if I'm, if I'm gonna support this tonight. Not supporting it doesn't mean I'm abandoning the strategy, but I'm just, I just have the notion that the, the concerns, too many concerns have been raised, and quite frankly, I was a little surprised, but once again, the way things happen in this village, we do listen to, to feedback and input from, from our citizens. And I live in the Willows, too. So I, I get that, I get the, hey, this is not, you know, your neighborhood issue, and you're the ones living there, and it's a real, real passionate issue for you. So with that, if there are no further comments, I'll look for a motion. Going once? Going twice? Well, the motion...
I'll make a motion to deny agenda item R13.
Second.
Hold on, the motion is what?
To deny.
Motion to deny.
So motion to deny, second. All right. We have a motion to deny, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the motion failed. It was denied, we're not gonna buy the property. Diane, please let the record show a vote of 5-0, to deny. Okay. All right, that concludes the business tonight on agenda item R13. Thank you all for coming. I'll give you two minutes to clear the hall, if you don't wanna stay for the rest of the meeting.
I'm gonna make a comment.
Go ahead.
Everybody, if we could invite you to the citizen summit that comes around next year, we would really love you to be there and add more input to this whole project. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all. We'll just momentarily adjourn for two weeks. No, yeah, there was no motion, it fails. But I think it's even better to let everybody speak, and you guys vote where you want to vote, so. Okay, we're gonna re-adjourn and continue with the, tonight's agenda, the regular agenda, and we're gonna go to agenda item R1. Agenda item R1 is a petition and approval for the village manager to enter into a professional service agreement for village hall architectural engineering design services with REG Architects. And I think, here he is. Village engineer will be giving a presentation on this wonderful project.
Okay, what I'd like to do is, is do a brief recap on the steps that we've taken so far to get to the, the point of moving forward with the new village hall. Procing back in 2011 is when we started talking about making some improvements to village hall. The first concept was, was renovating the lobby to make that more customer-friendly and nicer appeal for the residents. Then when we, when we looked at the lobby, we noticed that there was, our restrooms were out of compliance, because that's, that's what you have to do as part of that. We started to look at, at the, our current needs and the future needs for the building, and we didn't have enough space. The, the current village hall has no break area for, for our employees, they're, when they're eating lunch and there happens to be a meeting going on, they're forced to either, you know, to, to leave that, that current space. So the first step was to, to look at the existing building and look to expand that existing building, to add the square footage that we need now and, and going into the future. And we, we hired Bob Hill to do that, and basically what he came back with was, it was gonna be more, more expensive to, to renovate the existing building, to get the space that we needed, and the end product wasn't gonna be as good as building a new, new building.
And, and it wouldn't be hurricane-proof either.
Right, and that's, that's what I was gonna go into, is, is that it, it, the building wasn't gonna be as energy efficient, it wasn't gonna be able to withstand the wind load that it needed to, so it could not function as an EOC. The current EOC we use is, is pretty tight, and if we were to get hit by a major storm like the Bahamas experienced, it would be very difficult to run operations out of that building and recover from a storm. This is an opportunity to build a building that, that can withstand that type of storm and give us the space to have a building department that's, that's functional and open during that recovering period, and, and still get our operations to get our facilities back in order. So that being said, what, what we, we did next was, we went out for an RFQ, and we had some great firms that, that put in bids for that. We had two, essentially two rounds, we're a committee with myself, Ray Liggins, Bradford O'Brien, Rob Hill, and, and Bob Hill, and our architectural consultant sat on that committee, and, and shortlisted those to, to three really great firms. They presented to us, and, and we made the tough decision to, to, to narrow it down to one. And that, that was REG. And, and they did, they put together an excellent presentation, and, and we have a lot of confidence with them leading us forward in this project. And I'm gonna introduce Rick Gonzalez, and he's gonna give a brief presentation similar to what we saw, and, and then the, the next agenda item would be to, to approve an authorization for him to get started on design, so.
Okay. Good evening, council, mayor, and staff and citizens of Royal Palm Beach. It's really an honor, very excited for our company to be here again. We've actually did one of your projects before, one of your park projects, and we've been working here in Palm Beach County for 30 years, and in fact, our project manager is a Royal Palm citizen, so we're all excited in the office to start this project. We've enjoyed meetings with Chris and the team here at the, at the village, and we look forward to moving very quickly with this project first of the year. So I have a quick PowerPoint I'm gonna show you, and then any questions that you might have after that. Here's a rendering of what the potential building might look. These are just some very, very conceptual ideas. We're gonna have many design ideas, and we'll have several workshops to, to, you know, get input from the community at large and from the council. Our team, we have 20 people in our office, we've been in, here in Palm Beach since 1988. I'm the principal architect of the firm, and these are the senior staff, including my father, co-founder, Vlad, who does our renderings, Colin, our construction administrator, Manuel, who lives here in Royal Palm, who will be our senior project manager, and Veronica, who does our interior design portions of the projects. We have an exceptional team of consultants working for you in the village. Artiman for Geotech, TLC for MEP Engineering, O-N-M-N-J for Structural, Ingenuity for Civil Engineering, and Cutler and Herring will help us with the workshops, and they'll also help us with the land planning and the approval process of the, of the planning and zoning portion. Our capabilities are architecture, we do a lot of community planning, we do workshops and charrettes, interior design, we now do full animation, we're gonna show you a quick animation of the, of the project, too, renderings, full construction administration services, marketing drawings, and we also help with grants and historic preservation. We're 12 miles away, which was really very fortunate, the day of the interview, I forgot my PowerPoint, had to go back, get it, and I got here with one minute to spare at 8:59 in the morning. Hi, Chris, it was crazy. But I made it, so I'm glad I'm only 12 miles away. Some of our projects, we've done a, a lot of buildings with the hurricane-proofing that the mayor just mentioned, it's a very critical situation. If you've noticed, the last three years, we have not had really Hurricane I, II categories, they're all III, IV, and V. We've been very fortunate, this part of the state, we haven't been hit hard, but we've had a lot of experience the last 10 years designing and building these kind of buildings, which are very necessary in the event that a major event hits us in the near future. The city of West Palm Beach's fire station is also their emergency operations center where they go to. It also has a call, 911 call center, and they also have bunkers for senior staff to stay there in, in case of a major event. At the Village of Wellington, right around the street, we did the amphitheater, Scott's Place Park, and the 9/11 Patriot Memorial. That had a lot of public participation, public input into the project. We're excited about designing your city hall, because we did not design their city hall, so we're really looking forward to doing an exceptional job here. Another hurricane-proofed building, Northern Water Improvement District Operations Center and Headquarters in Palm Beach Gardens. We're currently building right now, as we speak, Seacoast Utilities' new headquarters, it's a master planned campus, very similar to your project. We are building the new building behind their existing building, gets built, once that's finished, we knock down the existing building, and then that turns into visitors' parking and landscaping features. So that's a very similar case study. And several years ago, we also did the Solid Waste Authority accomplice for Palm Beach County on, in Lantana. And our project approach for Royal Palm Beach is a quick summary that I have here for you. We looked at several sites, A, B, and C. By the way, you have a beautiful site here, you have this lake, the building, the landscaping, mature landscaping in the village, it's a green village, and it's great to hear you discuss about connectivity, and that's, that's good that we hope to bring into this project and then make it connected not only to this pavilion, but to other parts of the campus, including looking at buildings, the fire station, the police station, and the training center, and giving it a cosmetic upgrade, so that when the new building is done, it all feels like a complex, like it's unified and it's tied together with, with good design. Just, one question? Yes. So you're saying potential sites, go, yeah, yeah, A, B, and C, those are, in any, any of these options, though, we can still live, working where we are? Yes. Until the new building is done? Yes. Okay. Our experience has shown that that's really the best way to go. Oh, yeah, we, we worked the numbers, and it was a nightmare, we says, we gotta, yeah. Moving twice, I, I know, I don't, even, even in the house project, I don't recommend that to anybody. Tell me about it. Okay. So at this point, we think, and again, this is very preliminary, exploratory, we think the first site, A site, might be the best, because it'll solve some parking issues, some arrival issues, and have a strong connection, visual connection... some arrival issues, and have a strong connection, visual connection, to the meeting pavilion here where we stand today.
Just go back to that again?
Yes.
So 3 is where we are now?
Correct.
And the new building would be in that pink one?
Yep.
Okay, so one of the concepts we've been talking about was somehow connecting, you know, via a cover bridge or something, a cover over or something like that?
Like a breezeway or?
Breezeway, yeah. I didn't have the term.
Okay, yes, so that's something that we can look at in the design phase.
Even with this option, yeah?
Yes, we'll show you some options right now where we're doing it visually through landscaping, hardscaping, and a water feature too.
Okay.
Since you have some really nice water features here in the village. This is just your circulation route system, how people can approach the property. Sometimes when you make that left-hand turn off of Okeechobee, then you come into Royal Palm and you make another left, it might get a little bit confusing for people that are coming here the first time. Be nice if we can loop and connect.
It does get confusing.
It does get confusing. All right, I'm being a little polite.
When I'm out there during the day, people always stop and ask me, where are they?
So I think the challenge is not only a beautiful new building that's hardened, but also improve circulation?
Sure.
In your site. Improve a sense of arrival, for example, visitors, so they know where they're going. A shared parking solution that helps for this building, like tonight, for example, or for meetings during the daytime. Employees to the side, and then on the backside, service loading and additional employee parking.
Okay.
Over here, this shows again some of the thoughts in terms of the greenery, taking advantage of the existing water and gardens that you have on the northwest side, and bringing that through the visitor parking to the front of the building. A nice sense of arrival of approach as we come to the building. These are just some really quick sketches that Vlad and I delivered in the office before we were working on the concept. And here is a site, potential site, that shows you the new building, the building that we're in today, the walkway with the landscaping and the water feature as a connector. And again, that could be that way, or it could be with the covered pavilion. Here's an aerial view from the south, looking at the building, a two-story volume, so you have a nice sense of arrival, of entry, a port of cruise share too. You know, the weather is rough, you know, sometimes, and it's good to have a covered location, especially folks that are coming maybe to the post office quickly, and they want to come in and out quickly.
Or go between the two buildings.
Or between the two buildings too. You can continue the feature that way. Here's another view from the northwest, looking back, and I'm going to run a quick little video of the animation example.
Oops.
And in conclusion, you know why we hope to be, again, your team, we're close, we're available. By the way, all the companies that I showed you, they're all based here in Palm Beach County with people that live in the village or the western communities, and also on the east and north of the area. We have a proven track record with municipalities. We're doing several projects, we're working up in Toquista too, so we, in fact, we have four municipal projects going on right now. So two in Martin County and two here in Palm Beach County. We have experience working in and with Royal Palm Beach, and the impact and our experience in interior design work too. And finally, we're an award-winning firm. We'd like to showcase this project after it's open and you're using it, and maybe, hopefully, win some awards with it too. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Selena?
No. It looks great, and thank you very much, and love the rendering of all the trees, so hopefully we can get all those in or keep what we have. I think one of the things that I was looking at is that if we are going to demolish the other building, we have this one, is there an opportunity to combine the two, where instead of having two separate facilities, then this area would be inside that one, so there's one encompassing building. I know it's also, with one entrance, it's also a lot easier to navigate once you go in versus the outside stuff. I know our residents miss the, and this is through the postal service, so I understand it's not you, but if there's a way of doing the drive-through where there is the ability to put in a mail slot in and out, right, either that or just the mail slot, but I know it's, yeah.
But what you saw is incredibly preliminary. We plan on having two workshops to develop this concept. Definitely one public workshop where we get into the details that you're talking about, and then another workshop, a formal workshop in front of you guys, once we've narrowed it down to those options, so.
Okay.
Yeah, what you're seeing is kind of a pretty picture that they put together, and obviously, once we look at the mechanics of the site, then we could, yeah, we can get into those individual items.
Thank you. So the idea of replacing the building that's 42 years old, something like that, right? Which has been lovingly patched, and it is like a maze to try to find your way around when you're new in the area. The idea of having a centralized lobby-oriented kind of a thing is so appealing for that reason. The other that occurs to me, of course, is the hurricane rated, and the not having to reestablish the village headquarters when it comes time to get into a protected area, and then to have to reestablish yourself back when you may be in the midst of recovery and all that kind of, it makes so much sense for so many reasons. You mentioned that you are working on several different projects right now. Is there any one that is particularly similar to what you're proposing here that, if I was interested, for example, or any of us were interested in going and taking a look to see what that might, what our proposed building might look like, we could actually do that?
You said the gardens one, right?
Yes, that's been built for a while. We did also up in Sebastian, which is a smaller town than Royal Palm, it's just north of Vero Beach. We did their brand-new city hall, this was about 15 years ago, police station, double the size of police station, boys and girls club, park, municipal complex, and it was completed right as, remember those three hurricanes that hit back then, 2004, 2005? Those buildings were completed right when that happened, and they took a good beating, but they held up very, very well. That's a hike, that's a little bit farther north, but maybe as you're traveling, you know, during the season, you can go stop by and easily, you know, talk to the city manager up there to allow for a visit. Northern's Water Improvement is right here in Palm Beach Gardens. It's right off of North Lake at PGA on the south side there, so that's an easy one to go visit, you know, so those are two examples. And the same thing with fire station number five, so you can see the bunker, the emergency operating center, you know, how they handle those things when an event comes, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Those three.
Okay, anything else? Any other questions?
I'll make a comment. Rick, thank you for this presentation. The animation is really fun. My question is not for tonight, but as you think about the public meetings, the art element that will go into the design feature.
I missed that the door opened and?
The art elements?
I can answer that, yes.
Art in public places.
Our code requires that, so yes.
I'll be looking forward to seeing those ideas there, concepts, thank you.
That could be interesting.
But it won't be the banana peel taped to the side of the building.
Well, I don't know, we gotta, the banana peel thing, we gotta look at that, the side of the building. Or an actual banana.
Pineapple, maybe, not a banana.
Other fruits we could look at. Let's get that gray tape, that's the key, right?
Duck tape.
Duck tape. Okay, that's it? Okay, no further comments? I do not have any comment cards from anyone from the public on Agenda Item R1, but if anyone would like to comment, that would be the time. Seeing none, I'm closing public comment on Agenda Item R1, and if there are any further comments from members on council, if not, I'll look for a motion.
I'll move to approve Agenda Item R1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that Agenda Item R1 was approved 5-0. Thank you very much. Now, you involved in R2-2, you're for the next one? Okay. Agenda Item R2 is approval and authorization for the village manager to execute consulting services authorization number one with REG Architects, Inc., to provide architectural and engineering design services for the village hall construction. The cost for such services shall not exceed $448,000, I always laugh when I say this Okay, you're on.
Obviously, this, and what these design services get us is it will be through, basically, the advertisement or bid. This does not include design services during construction, that would be a separate consultant service authorization, and there is some survey work that'll be determined once we know a little bit more about where the building's going to be physically located, and that will be a separate authorization. So this will get us the design services to the point where we're advertising this, and then there would be additional authorizations for managing the construction.
Okay.
One other thing I did want to note is that in the RFQ, that there were some timelines that, once we sat down, we looked at meeting dates, and came up with a real schedule for design and the different approvals that we're going to need at the village level, some of those dates did shift. Right now, the date we have penciled in for a notice of proceed for construction is August of 2021, so that date did get pushed back from what we had advertised in the RFQ.
Okay, okay. Hopefully, we can make that timeline. Okay, I have no comment cards from members of the public on Agenda Item R2, but if anyone would like to comment, now would be the time. Seeing none, I'm closing public comment on Agenda Item R2, any comment from members on council? If none, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve Agenda Item R2.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that Agenda Item R2 was approved 5-0. Good luck, and good luck looking forward. Agenda Item R3 is a public hearing to consider variance application number 19-096, an application by Frieda Laurent in variance order number VC-19-15. The applicant is requesting a variance from section 26-79 for a shed to allow for a reduced side yard setback of 1.04 feet in lieu of the 10-foot side setback as required by code for a property located at 61 Sparrow Drive. Who's, is that, is this quasi-judicial, so we'll?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding. If you're going to be testifying to the village council, I need to place you under oath. If, you'll please stand, raise your right hands. Each of you swear or affirm under penalties of perjury that your testimony to the village council will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you, and then ex parte disclosures from the council would need to be made at this time. Thank you, Mayor, then we can proceed.
Okay.
I'm a little bit under the weather this evening, so Kevin is here to give my presentation.
Your backup? Okay.
I brought backup. He was kind enough to come in.
Remember Wally Pep, but okay.
The presentation is coming up now.
Does Kevin have jokes?
Does he have what? Do jokes? I don't know.
We'll find out.
Good answer.
Okay, so if you would direct your attention to the monitor, the property in question, 61 Sparrow Drive, is highlighted in red. It's directly across from the school, and the property is located at 61 Sparrow and situated within the single-family residential RS2 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance from section 26-79 for a shed to allow for a side yard setback of 1.04 feet in lieu of the 10-foot required side setback, resulting in a variance of 8.96 feet. The location of the shed is outlined on the survey in blue. The criteria for granting a variance is set forth at section 2632 F6B. Special circumstances and special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land structure or building involved. Should not result from the actions of the applicant. It should not confer on the applicant any special privilege. A literal interpretation of the provisions of this division would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. The applicant asserts that the shed has to be located in the proposed location due to the 25-foot drainage and maintenance easement located in the rear yard and the location of other existing structures on the property. The applicant further asserts that the shed has been located in the same spot for the past 20 years. An additional reason for the current location is that the property owners both have health conditions, and the current location allows them the most practical access. The applicant contends that this is the minimum variance which will allow reasonable access and safety for the property owners. Continuing on with the criteria, it should be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of the zoning code, and it should not be injurious to the area involved or otherwise detrimental to public welfare. Having said that, this is a picture of the shed. The village sent out the required 300-foot notices to all residents within 300-foot radius of the property, notifying homeowners of the various requests, our variance request. The village did not receive any responses either supporting or objecting to the application. In addition, no letters were provided by the applicant supporting the request. There was a person that showed up to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting who lived across the water, who could testify that she'd lived there 16 years and the shed had been there the entire time.
I was going to ask that question, how long this has been in place?
Yep. Well, she vouched for at least 16 of the 20, so.
Oh, you just said 20, yeah.
Village staff is not in support of this variance because staff believes no special conditions or circumstances exist which are not applicable to other lands. Condition is the result of actions of the applicant. It'll confer on the applicant's special privileges that are denied to other lands, and that literal interpretation of the code does not deprive the applicant of the rights enjoyed by other lands in the same zoning district, and also that it is not the minimum variance necessary to allow reasonable use of the property. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application on December 16, 2019, and recommended approval by a vote of 5 to nothing. Staff is still recommending denial of the application, 1996 variance and variance order 1915. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. The applicant is here as well.
Okay, before we take comments, I do not have any comment cards for this agenda item, R3, but if anyone would like to comment on this item, which would include the applicant? The applicant like to comment? No? Okay, going once, going twice. Closing public comment on Agenda Item R3. Open it up to council, Selena.
Two questions. Number one, you may be too young to know this, but what was the code 20 years ago when the shed was put there? Is it the same as it is today?
Good question.
We've done extensive research on the code over the years, and it's been pretty standard over the years for accessory structures. As a matter of fact, there's special provisions in the code for accessory structures, and the only two accessory structures that get a break from the regular setbacks from the zoning district are sheds and place structures.
Okay.
Which is one. Just to answer, to state your question a little differently, were you asking, was there some unspecified grandfathering that went on?
No, not grandfathering. What I'm saying is if it's been there for 20 years, so, and my follow-up question is, if it's been there for 20 years, why are we seeing it now? But my original question was, is, right, so my question was, is, I'm assuming then a, this had not come in front of the council 20 years ago when the shed was placed there, and that's why I was asking, is maybe did our code change, and they didn't need it then, and we changed the rules, so now they do need it, but then how did we come around? and we changed the rules, so now they do need it, but then how did we come across this?
Not that I'm aware of. I think it's, it came up because of code and compliance violation.
And how did we, how did that come across?
Did we find it on our own, or did somebody complain?
Code saw it. Code enforcement saw it.
Took us 20 years, but we stumbled across this thing.
Yes, that is correct.
Yes, I wanted to hear, okay.
And, you know, and things like this happen. We don't know. A fence might have come, a fence might have come down, and it was behind a fence, we didn't see it.
I know, I get it.
Landscaping might have been taken away. I mean, we do go back and look at the aerials, and there was more landscaping there in the past, and that might have been one of the reasons. But code saw it, it's violation, and that's why they...
And they're doing their job. And I just wanted to get that clarified, because if a neighbor complained or something like that, that's a different kind of a situation. But, okay. Anything else? Richard?
Yeah, my, sorry. My question would be, is the homeowner's the same for the past 20 years? So, basically, the juke, the point is, are these current homeowners the one who put this on this property?
Through discussions with staff throughout the process, they indicated that when they purchased the home, the shed was already there.
Okay, so it was an existing
Structure.
Structure when they bought the property. Okay, that's my thing. Thank you.
Okay.
My question is, if the, something happens to the shed and it's destroyed, is the variance only on this particular shed? So, if they want to replace it, they still have to comply now with the code?
No, if you grant the variance, it runs with the land, so it would be allowed to be that variance.
Which still stays.
Okay.
They could reconstruct.
So, I was going to ask along that line, is there a condition we could put on it to say if the shed comes down, it cannot be rebuilt in the same location?
I've opined on that in the past, and again, the variance runs with the land, so...
Answer's no.
If you grant the variance, you're saying that it's okay for that eight shed to be there?
Okay, in a word, no.
Correct.
Okay, 20 years, nobody's complained. That's kind of where I am right now.
Okay. Any other comments? Any other comments from council? Then I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve regular agenda R3.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that regular agenda item R3 was approved 5-0. So, good luck. Okay. Agenda item R4 is a public hearing to consider another variance, application number 19-0079, an applicant by Greg Moffett in a variance order VC19-14. The applicant is requesting a variance from section 26-79, sub 4, sub D, to allow for a reduced rear yard setback of 11.6 feet from an existing pergola in lieu of the required 20-foot rear setback as required by code, and a variance from resolution number 95-39 allowing for an 8.6-foot encroachment into a 20-foot late maintenance easement where the resolution allows a 7-foot encroachment for a property located at 101 Royal Court. This is also a quasi judicial hearing, so...
Thank you, Mayor. Go ahead and place you under oath. If you're going to be testifying to the village council, each of you swear or affirm under penalties of perjury your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you. And then, we need ex parte disclosures or discussions to be disclosed on the record at this time. Seeing none, then we can proceed, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, the property is shown in, highlighted in red on the monitor. The property is located at 101 Royal Court and situated within the single-family RS2 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance from section 2679-4D setbacks for an existing pergola to allow for an 11.6-foot rear yard setback where village code requires a 20-foot rear yard setback for a variance of 8.4 feet. In addition, the applicant is seeking a variance from resolution 9539 to allow for an 8.6-foot encroachment into a 20-foot late maintenance easement where the resolution only allows a 7-foot encroachment for a 1.6-foot variance from that resolution. The pergola is shown on the slide there at that location. The applicant asserts that the reduced setback is necessary because of the layout of all of the existing structures on the property, and particularly, the applicant states that the pergola was constructed at the end of the existing pool. The applicant contends that the pergola is a support structure for host plants for butterflies. The plants and vines provide a source of food and nectar for native pollinator insects, which improves the environment. The applicant further asserts that this is the minimum variance that will allow for reasonable use of the property and prevent village code from denying the applicant an amenity commonly enjoyed by other property owners. Village code section 2632-F6 allows the village council to grant variances to the code when special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land structure or building involved. It does not result from the actions of the applicant. It will not confer on the applicant any special privilege. A literal interpretation of the provisions of this division would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. That it will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of this division, and it will not be injurious to the area involved or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. The village sent out the required 300-foot notice to all residents within a 300-foot radius of the subject property, notifying homeowners of the variance request. The village did not receive any responses either supporting or objecting to the application. The applicant did provide letters from neighbors closest to the pergola, and the letter states that they are in support of the variance request.
Okay.
And then, there's a diagram of the pergola. This slide is a sketch showing the pergola provided by the applicant. Village staff is not in support of the variance request because staff believes no special conditions, circumstances exist which are not applicable to other lands. Condition is the result of actions of the applicant. It'll confer on the applicant special privileges that are denied to other lands. Literal interpretation of the code does not deprive the applicant of rights enjoyed by other lands in the same zoning district, and it's not the minimum variance necessary to allow reasonable use of the property. The planning and zoning commissions considered the application on November 26, 2019, and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Staff is still recommending denial of application 1979 VAR and variance order 1914.
Okay. Selena, you have a question?
I do. Kevin, can you go back to the slide with the artist, the other artist rendering? Go back one more. No, 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 the other way. Go back where you can see the whole property.
That was the first one, right?
Yes.
The first slide.
Go back to the, yeah. Okay, so this one. So, for clarification, the drawing is there because this is not an existing structure. This is somebody who's going through the process by asking for a variance prior to actually constructing the pergola. Is this correct?
No, it has been constructed.
It has been constructed, okay. And then, my other question is, is, just for clarification, because it's on an arc there, the aerial view that you showed, the actual photo, you cannot see that, so, okay.
Oh, the aerial view may have been prior to
The constructing of the, okay. All right, so then, the setback is from the water side, not from their neighbor's side. The pergola is far enough in on their own property, does not impede closer to their neighbor. Okay, thank you.
And that's the neighbor on that side that submitted a letter of support?
Yes.
All right, all right. Does the applicant choose to speak? Please come up, sir.
Greg Moffett, 101 Royal Court. My wife has been living there since 1990, so we've been at the property together now, and the idea was to build a pergola. I didn't know it was a violation, or we would have proceeded in a different manner and gotten our variance appropriately. The idea is...
You would ask for the variance up front, instead of...
Yeah. I was sure to do that any other project that we have, if that's necessary. Our idea was to fit it in with the existing variance that's there for the swimming pool, that is very close to the back of the house, and fit it in so that things fit in a lineup and have an architectural and for landscaping, as well as how it fits in with the house and the pool and the pavers and everything that goes there. I also saw that it has, no one can see it unless there, from the view that you posted, it was all the way across on Crestwood, to be able to see that, and that's probably why the inspector was able to see it. And our point is, is to fit it in with the village plan for green and building and the butterflies. My wife and my granddaughter are really big into these butterflies and having these vines and host plants, so as a grandfather, I'm trying to get those things in there and put it together. And so, it fits nice with our home, and so I'm asking for your approval. Thank you.
Wait, before you go.
You have a question? You have a question?
He answered it. They've been there since 1990, so this didn't exist when you guys got the house, right?
No.
This is something you guys put up.
Something I put up.
Okay, thank you.
And then, from, Kevin, from an architectural standpoint, then, it is not impeding past the line, the sightline from the edge of the house, correct? Because when Mr. Moffett was explaining that it would fit in, is that from the pool area, is it in line with the roof line, or does it protrude from the roof line?
It's beyond the roof line. It's in, what he said is that when you're on the pool deck, it lines up directly with the pool, you know, parallel with the house.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moffett. I do not have any comment cards for this agenda item R4, but if anyone would like to comment, now would be the time. Seeing none, I'm closing public comment to agenda item R4. If there are further questions or comments from council? If none, I'll look for a motion.
I'll move to approve regular agenda item R4.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One nay? All right, so Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R4 was approved 4-1. All right, thank you. Good luck, sir. Okay, agenda item R5 is a public hearing to consider variance application number 19-0072, an application by Danielle Moore in a variance order VC-19-13. The applicant is requesting a variance... The applicant is requesting a variance from section 26-79, sub 4, sub D, to allow for a reduced side and rear setback for existing pergola. Boy, these pergolas are popular, huh? In lieu of the required 7.5-foot side setback and 15-foot rear side setback as required by code for a property located at 11614 Oleander Drive. This is a quasi judicial process, so...
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone who will be testifying needs to be placed under oath. Each of you swear or affirm under penalties of perjury that your testimony to the village council will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you. And then, ex parte disclosures from the council. Seeing none, we can proceed with the item, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, the property is highlighted in red. The property is located at 11614 Oleander Drive within the RS2 single-family zoning district. The applicant, Danielle Moore, is requesting a variance from section 2679-4D setbacks for an existing pergola with a 1.5-foot side yard setback and a 1-foot rear yard setback where village code requires a 7.5-foot side yard setback and a 15-foot rear yard setback. The criteria for the variance is the same as the last two, and the applicant is asserting that the reduced setback is necessary because of the layout of all the existing structures on the property. In particular, the applicant states that the pergola was constructed on an existing concrete slab. The applicant contends that the pergola is needed because there is no shade in the yard without the pergola. The applicant further asserts that this is a minimum variance that will allow for reasonable use of the property and prevent village code from denying the applicant an amenity commonly enjoyed by other property owners. We've covered the criteria. Village staff's objection is the same as for the previous variances, and we did send out the 300-foot notice to all residents within a 300-foot radius of the subject property notifying homeowners of the variance request. The village did not receive any responses either supporting or objecting to the application. The applicant did provide three letters from the neighbors on both sides of their property and the neighbor across the street from the property which are in support of the variance request. Village staff is not in support of the variance. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Does the applicant choose a comment?
Like you, I'm under the weather, so my voice is going to be a little bit iffy, too.
Okay, what's going on? What's going around? What is this?
A school teacher. That's what's going around.
Ah, yes, yes. Okay. Just stay away, guys.
So, I'm Danielle Moore. I'm currently the homeowner at Oleander. I bought the house two years ago, almost three years ago. The concrete slab was there when I purchased the house. New homeowner, I was all excited. My first house. I want to do some renovations to make it even more beautiful to sit outside, so I had my future fiance, now my fiance, build me a pergola in the back just to make it more shady, to give it a little more area for people to come and sit outside, to sit by the pool, to relax with the shaded area. When we, when he did build it, I had no idea about codes or anything else. I'm a female. He's from Michigan, so coming from Michigan, he didn't have to deal with any of this stuff. And all the neighbors do enjoy it. They do come over and sit underneath the pergola while we sit by the pool. So, I'm hoping that you guys grant it, that we can keep it there, and...
Do we receive any documentation from the neighbors?
There were three letters that were...
Supporting it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
I do not have any comment cards from the public on agenda item R5, but if anyone would like to comment, now would be the time. Seeing none, I'm closing public comment for agenda item R5, and I think, Selena, you have a comment?
Just real quick, were you able to find a permit for the concrete slab?
Yes, there was a...
There was one pulled for it, so they did do, okay, thank you.
Really? That's interesting. That's good. We, they did give him a comment. Okay. No further comments if there are none from members on council. I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R5 was approved 4-1. All right, thank you, and good luck. All right, agenda item R6 is a public hearing for consideration of application number 19-100, an application by Lennar Holmes, LLC, in adoption of resolution number 19-37 confirming the council action. Applicant is seeking a modification to a council-imposed condition to allow for an amended phasing plan regarding the timing of the construction for the recreation site for a 385-unit, single-family residential planned unit development located at the northwest quadrant of Crestwood Boulevard and the M1 Canal. This is a quasi judicial process, so...
Thank you, Mayor. Any who swear or affirm under penalties of perjury your testimony to the village council will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you. If you'd like to come back to council for ex parte disclosures on this item?
I had none.
None.
Is this number six with the clubhouse?
Hold on a second.
Okay, I did have one with the applicant.
And I did, too. Phone call.
We'll let this and Mr. Hamara both have discussions with the applicant.
Yes.
Okay.
For those disclosures, we can proceed with the item.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, the height, the site is highlighted in blue. It's the Crestwood redevelopment by Lennar. The applicant is requesting modification to council-imposed condition to allow for the construction of the recreation site to occur prior to the issuance of the 281st Certificate of Occupancy, where currently, the condition requires the construction of the recreation site to occur prior to the issuance of the 151st Certificate of Occupancy. The original approval of the site plan, resolution 1625, required that the recreation site be constructed prior to the completion of Phase 1, which included 193 homes south of Whitcomb Drive. The applicant received a building permit on September 13, 2019, to construct the recreation site and is currently under construction. Village staff is recommending approval to modify the council-imposed condition 2L or 2I to require that the recreation facilities be completed and a strict certificate of occupancy be issued for the clubhouse prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy of the 281st home.
Before the 281st home, or by the 281st home?
Prior to the issuance of the 281st home.
Okay. All right, that's where I get that. Fine, before we take any comments from council, I do not have any public comment cards on agenda item R6, but if anyone would like, oh, before I do that, I'll give you the option to speak. I'm sorry.
It's all right. For the...
It's alright. For the record, Jennifer Vale with WGI, agent for the applicant. We're not going to go into any further detail that staff had presented, but in some of the discussions, they did note the building permit was pulled in September, the clubhouse and the recreation center is under construction. We're anticipating, or Lennar is anticipating that that be completed in the fall of 2020. They have been notifying neighbors who are purchasing homes at this point in time of that revised timing schedule, notifying that there will be recreational facilities available. They have sold approximately 140 homes to date, and approximately 150 have started, and just did not want the holdup, and that is why we're before you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, I thought I was saying, I don't have any public comment cards on agenda item R6, but if anyone would like to comment from the public, now would be the time. Seeing none, I'm closing public comment on agenda item R6. Take comment from members on council. If there are no comments, I'll look for a motion. Go ahead, Richard.
Well, I just wanted to point out that this is a situation, as Jennifer had pointed out, this isn't one where nothing is being done, that the construction hasn't begun, and it's something that's not in the process. This is something that's already been along the way, and it's actually a good thing because it looks like some of the homes are going, and they don't want to get crossed up with having to stop on the home building because they haven't completed the recreational project. So that's, seems like a good idea to me to move that back a little bit to give them a little more flexibility in the timing of completing.
Okay. Any other comments? I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend the approval of agenda item R6.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R6 was approved 5-0. Good luck.
Thank you, and happy holidays.
Same to you. Okay. Okay, agenda item R7 is a public hearing to consider application number 17-0036, an application by Urban Design Kill Day Studios in adoption of resolution number 19-14 confirming the council action. The applicant is seeking preliminary plat approval for 156, approximately 156 acres parcel of land located on the south side of Southern Boulevard, approximately .27 miles west of State Road 7. And with that.
Okay, the property is outlined in red on the monitor, and I won't repeat what you just said. The land being platted lies within the zoning districts that allow multifamily, single-family, commercial, and public park uses. The applicant is proposing to plat the 156.258 acres as eight separate tracts. The property is being platted in order to allow for a planned commercial residential development. The preliminary plat is consistent with the proposed development of the site. The plat conforms to the plating requirements of village code. More specifically, the plat contains all of the information required under section 2222 requirements generally, and the platted property meets all dimensional requirements for the zoning districts that are within the platted area. Additionally, the preliminary plat is consistent with the currently approved site plans for pods 2, 3, and 4, and the site for Erica, site plan for Erica Boulevard. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered the application on December, on December 16th, 2019, and recommended approval by a vote of 5 to 0. Village staff is recommending approval of application 1736 PP and adoption of the resolution 1914 with the following, or, I'm sorry, with no conditions.
No conditions, okay. That concludes your presentation. Does the applicant like to comment at this time?
No.
The applicant does not have a presentation. We feel that the planning and zoning and engineering department did an outstanding job.
Okay, thank you. Alright, I do not have any comment, I do have comment cards, I'm sorry. I'm so used to saying I don't have comment cards. We have a comment card for this agenda item from Mr. Dale Carruthers. Oh, I'm sorry, that's a miss, I'm sorry.
I've had that my whole life. I'm like the boy named Sue. My, for the record, my name is Dale Carruthers, and my husband and I live at 10355 Acme Road, and we are adjoining to the plat that's being approved tonight. And our concern is, is that currently, right now, we're not included in the plat, and we're considered Carruthers Out Parcel. And what we would like to do tonight is to urge the village to ensure that we have proper access, because our property is under contract, and we would like to have proper access into the road for the buyers that are going to be taking over our property. And that we ask that the planner of the plat, please put us in, into the plat, and we thank you very much.
Alright, is this, now, you're looking to sell this, this is, are they planning, this is the group that's planning to do the, is it an ALF facility there?
Yes, that's our property, yes. And we're excited in the fact that we want to, I'm a retired school teacher, and we've lived in this county for 30 years, and we still want to live here. But we want to make, it's nice to meet all of you, because you've probably heard about the Carruthers over the years and everything, and our property and everything. But we really want to have a positive benefit to the community with our land, and we feel that this would be a great way to do that. We think, too, with this, this piece of property being an ALS, is because of all the impact of all the traffic that's going to be impacted on Southern and 441, this would be a low-impact type of thing, and we'd be able to give back to the community, too. So that's our concern, is that we be including the easements.
You want to make sure you have road access.
Pardon me?
You want to make sure you, there's access to the facility.
Access to this facility, yes, please.
Kevin, could you just point out on the diagram, her property, or the property that she's referring to?
Is it this one here? Or this one? That one?
That one is, okay, thank you.
So to the right, is that Lowes, Lowes, is that what that is?
Yes.
Yeah, it's Lowes to the right.
Yeah, Lowes is over here.
You want to make further comments for the applicant?
I'm not with the applicant, Mr. Mayor. I have a card in, Chip Carlson.
Oh, you're.
Yes, that is my client.
You jumped the gun. Alright.
Sorry.
I, I want, before I bring you up.
Yes.
I just wanted, can you address the fundamental question? That, go ahead.
We have an applicant from the property owners with this property boundary. To include their property at this time would be a different application. We would not be opposed to accepting an application that included all the parcels contiguous to the canal. It would be a lot easier for us if we, if all the property owners agreed to that prior to coming here. It would be, it would be very easy to apply our subdivision regs and assure that access, but that's not what the, at least that property owner, and I think one other property owner a little bit further west, have not agreed to be part of the plat. Because of that, we have assured a 60-foot right-of-way will be maintained, and they'll have to build it when they, when they build on their properties. What we're having this plat do is dedicate 30, 15 feet on, well, 30 feet where, 60 feet where they have access on both sides, 30 feet where, 15 feet in, there's 30 feet existing. In one area, we have, in their, within their plat, they have a 15-foot dedication. In other areas, outside their plat, we have a 60-foot access easement provided, which is outside the plat, which was something we required of the developer to assure these people access. It is less than ideal. It's not a dedicated right-of-way with assured maintenance and assured construction, but because they're not part of the plat, it was, we didn't have the ability to force that. But if these property owners, what I've told these property owners, and I've told the person who's getting up to speak next, if, if they want to get with Tuttle and work out something different as, as how they're dealing with Acme Road, and they all agree, we will certainly accept that application.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Chip Carlson?
Yes, thank you.
That's an interesting name.
If we could get, Kevin, if you could pull up sheet 7 on the plat, that would be very helpful.
I, I don't have sheet 7 of the plat in our presentation.
Okay. Fair enough. What we have is, as Ray indicated, there's a half a section being established on, for Acme Road, which is a 30-foot section. North of that is another strip, a 30-foot strip of the existing easement for Acme Road, which would create the 60-foot section. There's also a component to the east end of the plat, which is the flag lot, part of which is in the subdivision, part of which is not in the subdivision, on which staff is requiring that certain easements be granted to provide for this 60-foot access. What we are, we're coming late to the party, frankly. My client misunderstands the nuances of this process. She said that they want to be in the plat. That's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about ensuring the 60-foot access section by way of these easements, with the ability of the property owners that are not included in the plat to come in and enter upon the 30 feet that's in the plat, build the roadway, the 60-foot sections that's required for their development, which we agree that that's the requirement of the future development of those property owners.
Mm-hmm.
And then establish some meaningful mechanism, consent to get in there. That's not provided in the easement. What we want to do is have staff, or have the village council direct that the applicant, the subdividers, meet with the Carruthers, the RAC Development Contract purchaser of my client's property, talk about the terms of the easement, because frankly, we think there's some issues with it. We know there's some issues with it. Mr. Liggins has first said that they're done with this, that they're not going to entertain any changes unless everybody agrees to it. I had a conversation with Mr. Tuttle outside. He said, "I'm just doing what the village tells me. If the village says I've got to make changes to this easement, then I'll make changes to the easement. I'll do whatever the village says." So I got two guys going like this. It's the other guy that.
Don't you hate when that happens?
Yeah, it's just, so, we're late to the party. We just want you all to say, send them together and make them work something out.
If your direction is for them to get together?
The preliminary plat that you have before you, council's staff is recommending approval on. The easements have been worked out between our attorney and the developer. But if the developer wants to propose a different easement after coordinating with the adjacent property owners that are not part of the plat, sometime between now and before final plat approval, we will, and it works out a better maintenance situation and addresses construction of the roadway, we will absolutely entertain those conversations, facilitate those conversations. But I'm not, the village isn't in a position to force any of these property owners to do anything, so it has to take their agreement to do anything. What's in front of you is something we are recommending for approval based on the agreements they've come up with to date.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead, go ahead.
The reality is that the subdivision regulations of the village require that access be provided to out parcels. We have legitimate concerns with the nature and the quality of that access. Let me, let me finish if I may. There is a provision in the subdivision regulations that says this should be a public road. I get that it doesn't need to be a public road. I'll concede that issue, but if it's going to be a private road, just like the Lowes plat to the east, that provides the other segment of this access, this one can be private, but the terms of it have to provide that there is an ability to use that roadway without somebody, Mr. Tuttle or the Property Owners Association or Florida Crystal's entity, to say, "Hey, you don't have the right documentation in hand. We're not going to let you in there." So the village can't say, "You guys go work it out." The village has an obligation under the subdivision regulations to require access that works.
Alright. Go ahead, you want to comment?
Do you need to square in, or is it that?
No, not others.
I, 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 I think there's a better way to explain what's going on here.
Is the green light on?
Okay. A better way to explain what's going on here is, the village came to me and said, "Look, on your property outside of the plat, we want you to give away land so some of your neighbors can have free access." I argued with them, and then in the, in the interest of getting a dealmaker, I agreed to give away my land, free and clear, to widen a road so that they could have access. There is easements that were prepared by the village, and my attorney, and the engineer, and the city manager, that we feel clearly gives them all the access and rights of any property owner here. They've been reviewed by your attorney, they've been reviewed by mine. We're standing here telling you, we're giving them access. The easements give them unequivocal access to their property.
Okay.
They're saying, "We don't feel your documents good enough. We want to enhance that document to make it even more bulletproof." My, I've talked to the village attorney, and she says, "It's the same access easement we've used with Lowes, with everybody. It gives them full access. It's good enough. If you want to add more to it, that's up to you, but it is sufficient as a representative of the village. It is representative." And I said, "Look, the village tells you you have access. I'm signing it when we record the deed. You have access," and they keep saying that's not good enough.
Okay, I hear you. You want to comment, Keith?
I don't disagree with anything Mr. Tuttle said or that the village managers, and I think that is all completely accurate.
Alright, so, so voting on this plat tonight, that client has access, there's no question, and there's no equivocation. They have the access.
No question in my mind.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just very briefly, and I apologize.
Don't get too deep in the weeds on us.
No.
You guys get into this lawyer stuff, that's beyond, okay?
Understood.
Okay.
The access easements provide that the property owners that not, that are not part of the plat can enter upon the roadway and construct it, and that the easement provides for that. What is not provided is that, that right on the plat itself, the 30 feet that's within the terms of the plat, does not provide for a third party, namely the property owners, to come in and construct the roadway on there. We just want to sit down with the village attorney. The last thing the village wants is a dispute two years from now.
We're not, okay.
Between these property owners. You guys consult.
You're right, we don't want disputes down the road, but what's clear to us tonight is you will have access. I just want to make sure that's clear. It's not going to be a situation where somebody's going to jump out of the woods and say, "Oh, no, you guys can't do this." However, you are free to continue to consult our council and further discuss that, but I do not see this as being, my concern coming into tonight was, you guys will have access. End of story. Now, if you've got some other details here that you still want to talk to the, the, our council about, that's, be free to do that. But this is not a reason to, for us not to approve the plat tonight.
Right, and, and we don't want to stop the plat.
And, and all of this.
That's the last thing we want to do.
And by the way, all of this is now on the record, so.
Yeah, the second thing we, we don't want to do is approve the plat. The first thing we don't want to do is have an access problem later on.
Okay.
But final plat is yet to come. So hopefully, everybody's going to understand this situation a little bit better, and we're going to have some movement.
You guys, you can continue to.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Selena?
I have a question, but I think Keith can answer this, is the homeowner expressed that it's residential right now, but that the purchaser of the property is going to be commercial. Is there anything that's going to hinder that based on the size of the easement, the access, the, anything of that, to prohibit that going forward?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Any other comments, Ray? Are we done? Good, okay. If there are no other comments then for members on council, I'm glad to see that this project has finally got to this point of getting a preliminary plat done, and hope we continue to move forward and stay on schedule. With that said, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item R7.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R7 was approved 5-0. Thank you all, and thank you. Okay, agenda item R8 is a public hearing to consider application number 17-0005, sub 13-18, an application by Urban Design Kill Day Studios in resolution number 19-13 confirming council action. The applicant is seeking a master plan approval and special exception use approval for a planned commercial residential development located on the south side of Southern Boulevard, approximately .27 miles west of State Road 7. This is a quasi judicial process, so, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Anyone testifying on this agenda item needs to be sworn in. Each of you swear or affirm under penalties of perjury that your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Okay.
Thank you, and then I need to ask for disclosure of ex parte communications from the council members at this time on this item.
None.
Thank you, Mayor. Seeing none, we can proceed with the agenda item.
Okay.
Okay, if you direct your attention to the monitor, the site has highlighted in red. It has the same boundaries as the plat. The applicant is requesting master plan approval and special exception use approval for a 156.258 acre parcel in order to provide a representation of the applicant's overall vision for the development. In addition, the applicant is seeking a special exception use approval for a planned commercial residential development. The master plan contains six pods, two of which are proposed to be developed as multifamily residential, two of which are proposed to be developed as commercial uses, and one of which is. of which is proposed to be developed as single-family residential, and one of which will be deeded to the village for use as a public park. The development also includes a tract that will be developed as an internal roadway. This is an illustration of the master plan. As indicated throughout the individual pod applications in the Traffic Performance Standards Ordinance letter, Pod 2 will include 401 apartment units on 29.36 acres. Pod 3 will include 318 apartment units on 23.95 acres. Pod 4 will include 100 single-family units on 33.75 acres. Pod 6 may include up to a maximum of 341,000 square feet of commercial uses on 31.85 acres. Pod 7 may include up to a maximum of 1,500 student charter school on 10.174 acres. Pod 8 will include a 10.7 acre public park. And also included in the master plan is Erika Boulevard, AKA for Phase 4 Lowe's Road on 11.2 acres of roadway connecting to State Road 7. Pod 6, uh, commercial uses break down 22,000 square feet of grocery, 13,000 of pharmacy with drive-through, 5,636 square feet of convenience store with eight pump-gassed islands, 76,500 square feet of restaurant, 55,000 of general commercial, 150-room hotel, 915-seat movie theater, 33,000 square foot health club, 12,000 square foot daycare center, five-lane car wash, and a multi-modal center. Similar developments are Delray Marketplace, 32 acres, 320,000 square feet of retail. Downtown at the Gardens, 35 acres, 316,231 square feet of retail. And City Place, West Palm Beach, 23.19 acres with 617,648 square feet of retail. Overall, the proposed master plan and special exception use for planned commercial residential development is in conformance with the village's requirements for the village-assigned zoning districts. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered the application on October 22, 2018, and recommended approval by a vote of four to zero. Staff is recommending approval of application 17-0005, MPSE and Resolution 1913. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
We feel the staff has done an excellent job and we don't feel a presentation is necessary. I do have comment cards on agenda item, um, R9, and we'll start out with Andy Morales. See here? There's comment cards that he supports the building of the charter.
We're on eight.
That's the next one.
Oh, we're on eight. I'm on my top.
That was nine. Yeah, okay.
Okay. I do not have any comment cards on agenda item R8, but if anyone would like to comment, that would be the time. Seeing none, I'm closing for the comment on agenda item R8. It opened for comments. Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item number eight.
Oh, mic was off. Okay. I'm not going to say it over again. Do I have to say it again? We're good? My mic was off. Agenda item R8, I have no comment cards. I closed public comment. No one wanted to comment, and I'm looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R8 was in fact approved 5-0. Moving on now to agenda, now we're agenda item R9. It's a public hearing to consider application number 18-0019, sub 13-18, an application by Schmidt Nichols in resolution number 19-12 confirming the council action. The applicant is seeking a site plan special exception use, architectural approval for a 77,674 square foot public and private academy institution, also known as a charter school, on approximately 10.17 acres parcel located on the west side of 106th Avenue South, south of Acme Road. This is a quasi-judicial process, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Swearing in, anyone who's going to be testifying on this item needs to be placed under oath. If you'll please stand, raise your hand. Each of you swear or affirm under penalties of perjury that your testimony to the village council will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you. Back to council. Would need disclosure of any ex parte discussions-
None.
-for the record at this time.
Not on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Then we can proceed with the item.
Okay. If you look at the screen, the site is highlighted in yellow. The applicant is requesting site plan special exception use and architectural approval for a public and private academic institution located on a 10.174 acre parcel of land. The development will consist of a 77,674 square foot school building, parking lot, drive-iles, buffers, and signage, a 9,574 square foot gymnasium building, and associated landscaping. The applicant is requesting special exception approval to allow a public academic institution charter school and a general commercial zoning district. These tracts consist of several single-family homes on large tracts.
Okay.
This is an illustration of Pod 7 and how it is situated within the overall master plan. It's highlighted in blue on the master plan. The applicant is also requesting special exception use approval to allow a public academic institution charter school in the commercial general zoning district. The applicant is proposing a public charter school, which will ultimately accommodate grades K through 12. The maximum proposed number of students being requested is 1,500 students at full capacity. A proposed maximum of 80 staff and faculty is what is contemplated. The school will also provide athletic fields and a 9,574 square foot gymnasium. The project is proposed to be developed in three phases. The first phase will be a 40,532 square foot two-story building, which houses grades K through 8. And the second phase will be a 37,142 square foot two-story high school building. The third and final phase will be the 9,574 square foot gymnasium. The principal access to the school is proposed to be located off of Erika Boulevard to the north and will allow right-in and right-out access only. The proposed access will be near the center of the north property line. A secondary access is proposed from Lulz Road to the east and will provide full access to enter or leave the site from either direction. Those accesses are located here and there. Excellent. Okay. In reviewing the proposed site plan, staff considered compatibility with the adjacent land uses, consistency with the village's comprehensive plan, and conformance with the general commercial development standards in section 2689. Specifically, the proposed site meets the requirements for general commercial zoning district as it relates to, um, parcel size, parcel width, setbacks, pervious area, parking requirements, landscape areas, and maximum building height. This is an illustration of the landscape plan, which meets all of the village code And the applicant is also seeking architectural approval for the building architecture, color, and materials, and signage. The slide shows an illustration of the architectural theme to be used on the site. Overall, the proposed site plan special exception use and architectural approval is in conformance with the village's requirements for this type of development and is in conformance with the village's requirements for the general commercial zoning district. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered the application on December 16, 2019, and recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval of this application and resolution 1912. We would like to add a condition of approval, that the gymnasium will be constructed when the school has reached a capacity of 1,200 students or within 24 months.
The condition of approval would be that when the school reaches a capacity of 1,200 students, the, um, the, the school owners would then construct within 24 months the gymnasium, the Phase 3. So we wanted a trigger for the Phase 3, the gymnasium. And that 24 months is designed for the stabilization at the 1,200 students. We didn't want it to drop below. 1,200 students is kind of the threshold, so within that 24 months, then that's when the stabilization and then the construction of, at the end of that 24 months, the construction of that gymnasium will occur in Phase 3.
Okay. Go ahead.
Just for clarification with that Bradford, or depending on your voice.
That's all right.
So when you say then, they have 24 months to construct it, that's after you have that many students that have registered in the school, or it needs to be completed before that 20, that-
No. It would be the, the, um, the attainment of the 1,200 students, and then they would have, within 24 months, that's when they would start construction. So that 24 months would be the, kind of like the stabilization and the assurance that that 1,200 students will be maintained.
So my, the way I look at it though is that you have, and I understand the phasing, so you're going through from K through 8 first, and as they progress and go from there. But if you're saying you have to wait until you have that and the capacity of the school is at full capacity from K through 12 is 1,500-
Right.
You almost have to have the school at capacity before you're going to build a gymnasium for the students where they now conducting PE, other venue, other, yeah. That's my concern, is why are you not starting it earlier?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Josh Nichols with Schmidt Nichols for the record. So in Phase 1, where the gym is located for, for Phase 3, that's a recreational area. Also, we have two basketball courts, full-size soccer field. So there's many recreational areas within, within the property. Again, it really comes down to, it's a financial model that until we can reach that certain number of students, it, the financials for the school can't support the gym.
So in other words, on a rainy day, no one gets exercise that day? Correct?
Yeah, I mean, the cafeteria, as Bradford mentioned, the cafeteria would be available at certain points of the day as well.
So no school plays, no interacting before, that's all not going to fit in the cafeteria? That's my concern as far as like a STEAM or STEM school that would have all those amenities, you're not providing that until you're almost at capacity.
And typically, so K through 8, you definitely don't have a gym in any of the schools, even the public Palm Beach schools. So the cafeteria would double for those type of events. But there's no gymnasiums in a, in the K through, K through 8 public, public schools. I guess in the middle, sorry.
Middle schools have gyms. Crestwood Middle has a gym. I've been in a bunch of times, so that's not right.
K through 5 doesn't have, yes, correct.
Because they use the cafeteria.
Correct, correct. Sorry about misspeaking on that, but yes, K through 5 doesn't have a gym.
My name's Mark Rodberg. It's our desire to build out the whole campuses upon demand. The prudent 24 months after it stabilizes 1,200 is just to be prudent if the FTE drops, if, if conditions with funding for public school changes. But we would, we would commit that it would commence within 12 months of reaching the 1,200 threshold. At most all, at the models, that all works. But the flexibility is, is the main thing we're looking, I agree with you 100%. There's nothing drives enrollment like a beautiful new gymnasium.
Well, and especially since you've, the school I believe is a sports-themed school as well, so that's why my concern was that side of it too.
As it pertains to the upper grades.
Okay.
On, on the younger ones, the K5 is in the K.
Right.
Through middle school's got the standard curriculum, then the emphasis is put on the, the, the 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th with the sports, leadership and management.
Okay.
So, well, I want to outline, so how's the progression for student count work? In other words, you'll get students in there who will be moving up in grade. Is that how you fill out the 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th grades?
Yeah, typically, year one is, is, and it's attached as part of the, the sections approved of the charter application. Uh, year one's 405. Is that the projection, what we're hoping to be is 405, year one? Offering kindergarten through 5th grade.
Through 5th, right.
Then add a 6th grade, goes to 700? We have the, the-
Right. And I do understand the, the progression side of it, and I understand from your point of view that my concern was just the timeline didn't seem as though you had to be at almost capacity before you added this element, and that was one of the things that you presented.
Yeah, we're not, we're not trying to delay building and we're not, and we don't want to push water uphill not having the gymnasium. I agree with you 100%. And, and then the middle school, it's, uh, the desire's there too to have gymnasium.
Okay. Because you're, yeah, you're almost, yeah, your school's going to be full by that and you will have up through 12th grade. You're just short 300 students before you have to start building a gym, which I know you have more than the 300 in the 9th through 12th.
Yeah, that, that's the way I think it'd go. I think the demand is certainly here for this, for this option.
I just had a clarification on the, the school itself. At first, I thought we were talking about a SLAM school, but then I thought I heard something about a Somerset Academy. Could you just clarify?
Yeah, the K through 8 will be a, um, a Somerset Academy with the emphasis, you kind of, you want to get a shot at this more clearly?
Yeah. Come on.
Hi, Kendall R2C. The elementary program or the K to 8 program combination school is a Somerset Academy program, and it is a STEM or STEAM-based program. So the emphasis on science and engineering, we have robotics component. The high school program would then go into more of a sports leadership management program. So it would be the SLAM school, sort of like what we have currently at SLAM and Somerset Lakes. So that's a similar model. If you're familiar with that, I don't know if you're familiar with that. That's in West Palm Beach, off of Summit Boulevard. And, and going to the same thing with as far as the gym and whatever, that, we have done the same similar situation there where it started out smaller and we used the multipurpose cafeteria gymnasium for the students and then have built on as the enrollment had increased.
So the, the students who are in the elementary program for robotics and, and STEAM or STEM, are there opportunities for them to continue in high school with a different emphasis?
Yes. The sports leadership management program is a very comprehensive program. It's not just, you know, playing sports. It gets, goes into, there's a medical component, there's marketing, there's a lot that has to do with, you know, science and engineering in that program as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, since, since I had you up here and you brought up the, this has been done before, and I guess I, I want to know, one, how many times have you done one of these where, you know, the gym was coming on later?
How many times?
How many times? How many?
The company that I work for supports about 180 charter schools across the country. So to tell you how many we've done this with, I couldn't give you an exact answer, but we've done it quite a number of times.
It's more than 10.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, it's something you've done a bunch of-
Yes, we've done this many times in different counties and different states. It's a very successful model and that's why-
And it's been a successful model, okay. You haven't had ones that have, you know, you get to K to 8 and for some reason, after you hit your threshold, you don't go forward with the gymnasium or whatever the structure is, or whatever the plan is on those, that's just my thought.
That doesn't, that doesn't happen, yeah. We, we, go ahead, I'm sorry.
The best local example of, of this pattern was the Canyons in West Boynton. It was opened initially for 600 students. When they hit about 800, they added another wing and then a gymnasium was built two years ago. So that's the, the desire.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
If I can just have a brief minute, I have to, um, Kendall, early in her career, taught my children in a charter school, and this goes back to about 2002. And I'll just, to let you know, they're both, in my mind anyway, success stories. My daughter's my law firm office manager, my son's a senior in college, so I, I could do nothing but vouch for Kendall, and I think any project she's involved with, based on my experience, will certainly be successful.
Okay. Thanks for that, that insight. Yeah.
No, that, that was not under oath, but it is from the heart.
Ex parte.
Is that, is that ex parte?
Is that what?
Okay, we do have comment cards. Okay. Starting with Andy Mozzala.
I clearly support charter schools.
Address.
1306 Summerwood Circle, Wellington. I back up to the property that's near, near the school. Certainly support charter schools, school choice, lowering the teacher-student ratio. It's a great thing for the area. And having schools closer in your neighborhood where you live.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Ed Ferguson?
No need to speak, I support.
Your support, that's what it says here. Okay, so, thank you. Uh, Laverne Hollander?
I did first speak, but I support.
Got it here. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Karen Hardy? Come on up. Okay, you, okay, everybody's on the same page in that, huh? It's interesting, we have people from around the community. You're from Laxahatchee, right? Okay. Courtney Hardy?
She left.
She left? She didn't put that, she checked she supported it, okay.
Been in for three hours? Come on, come on.
Who's, is it Richard? Richard Hardy?
My husband, we support. He's got to take off.
Okay. Yeah, you said he passed on speaking. Lucinda? Lucia? No?
How about Lucinda?
Is there anyone here who put a card in who didn't speak? She must have left.
Okay.
But she absolutely supports the school as well, so. Is there anyone? Go ahead.
No, but this will be our ninth school in the village, is that correct?
Who's counting? I don't know.
I believe so. We have the three elementary, the middle school, the big school, the private school, and two charters.
This provides a second, at some point, this will be right, our second high school.
That's what I mean, so it's nine, so here we are is thirty-eight thousand and nine.
We're approaching forty, but okay.
Once Tuttle gets done with us.
All right, I have no other comment cards submitted on agenda item R nine, but if anyone here would like to comment, that would be the time. Okay, seeing none, then, I'm closing public comment. If there are any further, if there are no further comments or questions from members on council, I'll look for a motion.
I'll move to approve regular agenda item number nine.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? We have no oppose. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R nine was approved five zero. Good luck, sir. Hope you stand scheduled.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item R ten is a public hearing for first reading and approval of ordinance number nine nine nine, amending chapter twenty-two subdivision of land to modify the requirements for park and recreation, land dedication, or payment of fees in lieu thereof. Sir, you are.
I'll read the whole title, and then we'll go from there. This is ordinance nine nine nine, ordinance of the village council, village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, amending chapter twenty-two subdivision of land, article three development design standards, section twenty-two fifty-five, recreation requirements for residential developments in order to modify the requirements for park and recreation, land dedication, or payment in fees in lieu thereof, prior to the need and every other section and subsection of chapter twenty-two shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, severability clause, authority to codify, and effective date and for other purposes. This is first reading.
Okay. You got anything to follow that?
I have nothing to add.
Just briefly, why are we doing this?
We want to have residential developments that are multifamily. We want them to have a park requirement on the, on the site, so that the residents have a place within walking distance of their homes to recreate.
So this makes our ordinance a little bit more specific, I guess.
Clarification.
Clarification, okay.
It's very clear that fifty percent has to be, remain on-site, and no more than fifty percent can be in lieu.
Okay, this codifies that.
The history of this is, the park dedication was always a requirement in our subdivision codes.
Right.
It is what was used to dedicate all of our public schools, all of where the rec center is, all the land around the rec center. At that time, we were dealing with the colony, who was dealing with quarters of the village at a time.
Way back.
Right, and that's, and that's where the, every school site in the village, and most of our park sites have come out of this requirement. About, I don't know, ten years ago, maybe a little bit more, we changed it from seven and a half acres per thousand people to a thousand, ten acres per thousand people. When we were doing those developments back then, and the multifamilies were coming in, they were always doing recreation.
Right.
It came to our attention, really, when the Carmack site came in, that those people were trying to get around our subdivision regs and not plat and not have to be subject to it, and if you remember, we corrected our code at that time and included basically the same provisions in chapter twenty-six as we did, which is our zoning code, as we did in twenty-two. When we were, when we were dealing with these single families, our intention, we did let them do zero recreation on-site, but all of our multifamily was doing recreation. When we kind of added it to twenty-six, made the language in the two of them exactly the same, there was a phrase in there that says that you will have, and then we had single-family developments starting to do a lot of on-site recreation, we limited them to no more than fifty percent of this dedication could be private recreation on-site. In other words, we wanted public, some public dedication out of all of our developers. When that was, when that was extrapolated to multifamily reading it, well, we don't have to do any, because it's up to fifty percent.
Right.
So we can do zero, and anything more than zero would be a benefit to the village of Royal Palm Beach, and it's like, well, no.
That wasn't the intent.
So what this does is, right, and we looked at it, and what, you know, our biggest question was, you know, how much do we require? You know, fifty percent was the number we picked, only because that was the number that kind of the other developments have done over the past couple decades, that we wouldn't allow them to do more than, and most developments actually did more than fifty percent. But that is kind of the key to this, is how much do you require? And what this is, is fifty percent of that requirement, so it would be five acres dedication for every thousand residents. So if you come in with a development that has, no, I think we made it two and a half, or we made it like two people per unit in multifamily, so if you had five hundred units, thousand people, you would have to have at least half of that, or two and a half acres of on-site recreation, and not just park, not just open space, but it could be where the pool is and those areas. So this is, this is a way to make sure that our multifamily has the requirement of on-site recreation.
Okay. I do not have any comment cards for agenda item R ten, but if anyone would like to comment, seeing none, I'm closing public comment for agenda item R ten. If there are no comments from members on council, I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number eleven.
Uh, R ten.
Ten, I'm sorry, ten.
That's okay. I do the same.
You went back, I go forward.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? We have no oppose. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R ten was approved five zero. Agenda item R eleven basically is the same thing, but for chapter twenty-six, public hearing first reading and approval of ordinance number one thousand, amending chapter twenty-six zoning to modify requirements for park and recreation land dedications or payment of fees in lieu thereof.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance one thousand, ordinance of the village council, village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, amending chapter twenty-six zoning to provide for an amendment previously approved zoning codes specifically amending article four supplement on regulation section twenty-six dash seventy-five point four recreation requirements for residential developments in order to modify the requirements for park and recreation, land dedication, or payment in fees in lieu thereof, providing the need and every other section and subsection of chapter twenty-six shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, severability clause, authority to codify, and effective date and for other purposes.
I don't know how you do that, but thank you.
Same pressure.
No breathing.
Amazing.
Any comments? Nope, nothing to add. I have my comment cards on public, from the public on agenda item R eleven. Anyone like to comment? Seeing none, closing public comment for agenda item R eleven. If there are no comments from council, I'll look for approval.
I make a motion, I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number eleven. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? We have no oppose. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R eleven was approved five zero. Agenda item R twelve is a public hearing for a second reading and adoption of ordinance number nine nine three, amending chapter twenty-one dash seven, article two, right-of-way regulations to conform this article to recent state law changes regarding communication facilities, and especially wireless facilities that may be placed or maintained in the village rights of way. This is the second reading, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance nine nine three, ordinance of the village council, village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, amending the code of ordinances at chapter twenty-one point seven, article two, right-of-way regulations to conform this article to recent state law changes regarding communications facilities, and especially wireless facilities that may be placed or maintained in the village's rights of way, prior to the need and every other section and subsection of chapter twenty-one point seven shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, severability clause, authority to codify, and effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you, sir. Richard?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, the village manager pretty much straightened it out for me today, but I just wanted to get it from the horse's mouth. The letter we received, I think it was either yesterday or today, I got an email.
Yes.
Did you, we're good relative to what their concerns are in there and what we have. That's all I needed to know.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. I have no comment, public comment cards for agenda item R twelve, but if anyone would like to comment, that would be the time. Seeing none. Seeing none. I'm closing public comment for agenda item R twelve. If there are no comments from council, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve agenda item R twelve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? We have no oppose. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R twelve, second reading, was approved five zero. We've already addressed agenda item R thirteen, so we'll move to fourteen and fourteen...
Good call moving that, by the way, Mr. Mayor. I would say good call removing that.
Yeah. We're looking for, agenda item R fourteen is an appointment of Linda Walker to the pension plan board, village manager.
We did ask for interest from the twenty-five members that, current employees that are in this plan, and Linda Walker showed an interest, and I recommend that council put her on the board.
Okay. I don't have any comment cards from the public on this agenda item, but if anyone would like to comment, that would be the time for agenda item R four, fourteen. Seeing none, I'm closing public comment for agenda item R fourteen, and if there are no comments from council, I'll look for a motion.
Since Ms. Walker signed that she is interested in applying, and she wasn't voluntold for missing a meeting, I make a recommendation to appoint Linda Walker to the plan, to the[1744.91]